Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Belle Air Beach City Council Meeting for December 6, 2021. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Item 12, please call for all.
Councilmember Frank Baker. Councilmember Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Lutero. Councilmember Rita Slope. Vice Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
City Attorney Fred Riley.
Here.
And Councilmember Robin Aki hasn't arrived yet.
Is there anyone on the phone?
Councilmember 12.
12 is on the phone, okay. Very good. First, folks, if you have any cell phones or anything, please put them on the vibrate mode so we don't listen to them. Before we start, I was just outside before, and I know most of you were. What a wonderful presentation that the Parks Board did, and what a great group that we had sitting there. Got us into the spirit. So my congratulations to everybody involved with that. What a great way to start the season. So, great job. First item of business is to approve the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Frank Banker. Second?
I'd like to make a motion to the CNN.
One second, let's get this passed, and then, yeah. Actually, I know what you're gonna say. Leslie, second it.
David, I guess Jeff Davidson, Fire Chief, is here.
Yep.
And I would like to put him in item four, move everything down, give him an opportunity after the Sheriff's Department.
First of all, suggest making 3B. We'll go Sheriff 3A and him 3B. Can you do that?
I will.
Okay. So you have a motion to change the agenda. Do I have a second to that? Second, let's go for discussion on Chief Davidson speaking. Chief Davidson speaking only. Any, if anyone want to discuss that? Citizens, back to council. Take a voice vote on this, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Chief will speak on section 3B. Now to approve the agenda. Any comments on approving the agenda as amended? Nothing from council. Anyone from the citizens? Back to council. Take a voice vote. All in favor of the agenda as amended? Aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, with that, we'll go to citizen comments. Folks, the way we do this is, the podium is right up here. Please speak. I am speaking about one inch into the mic, and everyone can hear me. If you speak three inches from the mic like this, no one can hear you. So please speak into the mic so that it comes out on the tape. When you come out, just give your name and address, and then you have three minutes for any item that is not on our agenda. If it's on our agenda, we will get to you later on. There'll be a citizen comment point at that point, and we'll invite you up again. So if it's something that's not on the agenda and you wish to speak to council, please come up. There's rules of conduct all around this room here. I can summarize it in one sentence. Just basically speak to us the way you'd have us speak with you. Just everybody be good, and the Christmas spirit will have a wonderful meeting. With that, I'm gonna open up the floor to citizens' comments. Yes, sir.
Tom Ferraro, 123 Alita Drive. I got pictures, I just gonna advertise and pass it down.
Sure. I don't know if I mentioned, you have three minutes of time when you're up here. We're not gonna count the distribution, okay? So it starts now. Go ahead.
I told Lynn, I said, "I'll try to speak as fast as I can." Again, Tom Ferraro, 123 Alita Drive. So I'm here to ask the council to review, reappraise the decision in 2018 about the fence heights and hedge heights on waterfront properties for the setbacks. I live at 123 Alita Drive. I'm on the water. We've lived there for 26 years. We've enjoyed a wonderful view. We look out in the backyard, left and right. We had neighbors move in a couple, three years ago. They planted some palm trees fairly close together. On the other side of our wall, they were low. And if you look at the first picture on the deck, that's the view we've had for 23 years. If you look at the second picture on the deck, that was about a year ago. And if you look at the third picture, that was two weeks ago. You can see, I don't think the intention of the ordinance change was to do that to us, and I don't think it benefits everybody to do it, but what happened is, they got to the point where they were five feet, and I went to talk to them about asking them to come down, but I read the ordinance first and found out that it'd been changed. So it surprised me. So I'm just asking if you guys, I don't know what the process is to reconsider. I'm happy to shepherd it through, talk longer about it. I think it's fairly evident from the pictures what I don't think was intended has happened. But I'd like to ask us to look back at either lowering that or going back to where it was to be able to benefit this view. I mean, we live here on the water. The idea of being able to see makes all the sense to me, and the idea that we boxed off with, I think I even read the code, that it's very definitive about what you can see. And I just think that's wrong. So anyway, I was on council earlier in 2000. I know you guys have got a lot of balancing you gotta do, but I think this is one that needs to be re-reviewed. And I asked to do that.
Let's think one second, please. Counsel, we've done this the last couple of times. I'd love to give this gentleman an answer on how we could proceed with this. He's asked a question, and I don't want him to have to wait till it's our turn in the end. That would require a motion to dispense with the rule so that we can speak directly with him. Somebody make that motion? Motion by Frank Banker, a second? Anyone? Sorry. Okay, I'll address this at the end, if you can.
It's not to yourself, but we have to make a call.
Okay, I'll address it during council comments. Okay, thank you. Any other citizens? Yes? I didn't see you work at Dever Mall.
Danny Mall, 115 Causeway. I'm here to talk about the lights, the side lights on the new sign. They are very bright at night. And I know that they come on at 6:00 and they go off at 10:00, but during the night, once it's dark at 5:30, those white lights are crazy bright. And I have pictures on my phone. I can, with my wide plantation shutter slats open, I can see the sign across, all the way across from the other side of my house. And the city's always been a good neighborhood, but that's just not a good neighborhood. So I would like to suggest that the white, the white lights get dimmed down. When I looked at Tampa, so the gentleman who was here, and I sent you all that information from the city of Tampa, our lights are brighter than theirs, and that's just crazy. I have a light meter. Roger and I have been over here measuring the lights. It's, it's about double what Tampa's highest is. So what their policy is, is 30 minutes before sunset, they dim down, and then 30 minutes after sunrise, then they go back up again. And I think that it has a sensor or something that can do that, or it can be, certainly, I know it can be programmed to do that. So I would appreciate it if somebody could look into that.
I'm gonna address it at the end also, okay? Any other citizens? Yes, sir. Mr. Mall.
Rodney Mall, 115 Causeway, Gold Harbor. Just to add what Debbie was saying, I think a little clarity, so to change from the light area, what we have found, we were 10 feet away, that where it's the round circle, the city of Belle Air Beach, that's a term as bright as the white digital lights. And so I think that there's probably, I'm sure there's some way to tweak the amount of water that goes into the brightness of those lights so that they can dim down or be the same as what the city of Belle Air Beach signs is. Because it literally is three times as bright as just the light that's on on that corner. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Mall. Any other citizens? Seeing no other hands, I'll close citizen comments, and I'll move forward. Somebody say something there? Patty? Is there a copy? That was just somebody banked, okay. Next, we're gonna move into the Pinellas Sheriff's Office. Do we have a sheriff? We have two people here from the Sheriff's Office. We have our Code Officer Danny Doherty, and then we have law enforcement. So Danny, you can go first? Okay. Danny Doherty, you'll go first.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I presume everyone's got a copy of the code activity. Just one note on there, on the second page. I forgot to enter a date. So under 11/22, and between those two Cs, which are city complaints, it would be 11/23/21 on that line.
Yep, should be maxed out 401 harder.
Yes, sorry about that. This was a short month due to the holidays. I was also training, took a vacation, a couple vacation days. I only worked 15 days during the month of November. During the month, I had 89 items in activity, which included follow-up investigations as well. Primary actions or violations for activity. I wrote it down into six categories. Number one with 14, I did 14 permit checks on construction-related residences. Five code assessments on houses for sale, making sure there were no code violations, and they were one none. There were some landscaping, basically overgrown grass and weeds, five, which were all corrected. And along with junk debris, four, and site debris requirements, which is dumpster, no covers, and total, four as well. Final, final activity, there were six items, six incidents of boats with jet ski, with trailers on the driveways, and they were all corrected through communication. If you have questions about any of the activity, we'll have an answer.
Danny, this is the second month now that you've went with the 20-hour work week. How are you finding that so far?
I'm staying busy. It's pretty much the same. What I like about it is it's able to give me more time to follow up and close the cases out a little quicker. Basically, if I can't do it that day, I find a lot of success when I come back to work the following day instead of going throughout the week to interrupt with the citizens and get things taken care of.
And how's everything going here at headquarters? Everything going well, relations-wise? Good, good to hear that. Counsel, any other questions? Citizens, any questions for our Code Officer? Thank you very much. Have a very merry Christmas. Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you. Pennell's County Sheriff?
Sheriff, if I may, before you start, I have something I want to say. Don't stand up there. This is good. This is real good. So the other day, I'm like minding my own business in my house, working on an appeal, as I can. I see one sheriff's car come by, two sheriff's cars come by, three sheriff's cars come by, Clearwater comes by, five more, undercovers. I'm like, what is going on? And then I found out what was going on. For those who didn't know, we had a little action finally in Belle Air Beach, right? We had a bank robber from Clearwater who decided to come this way. That was a big mistake. Turned down Second Street. That was even a bigger mistake. Tackled with the wrong guy. That was even a bigger mistake, because the guy started fighting him. And by then, all I saw on the report was that the sheriff's dogs started, like, taking chunks out of me. So, great job, really great job. Thanks for keeping us safe. Tell us the boring stuff now about the, you know, hard areas and things.
I'm gonna tell you the same thing that we come up here and tell you just about every single month. This is probably one of the safest cities in the state of Florida to live in. Nothing new to add outside of, you know, that happened just the other day. But as far as the past month, there's nothing out of the ordinary or anything that involves any citizens within the city. Again, most people pass it through using the bridge to go to Clearwater or to go back to Largo. So that's usually where we catch most of the stuff that does even pop up, you know? We kind of need to go eyes and everybody being arrested, people aren't certain that that is not the citizens in the city. So it's a very available coverage.
And looking over the October report, we had six incidents, like, three larcenies and a couple, yeah, two assaults. Do you know what that was all about, or?
Most, most of the way that the calls come out sometimes, our call takers get them as they get dispatch to us. Assaults, they couple those in with disagreements. Or, again, you have the one commercial that's rocking into this city, which is the resort up there. And that is usually the only place that we have any incidences where there's any kind of paper, you know, people getting into a domestic argument. Somebody from a neighboring room calls in, people are in there or something, it's still against the law. We show up, they're visiting from out of town, somebody made an arrest, it, it happens. But that's, that's the spot where most of your activity is, I mean, considering it's not a commercial.
I mean, for the year, as the sheriff was saying, we have 19 incidents so far here today from October. Most of them are just like nine assaults, and there's like seven larcenies, which are the smaller things, and a couple of burglaries, which usually are car things. So, I mean, yeah, it's real safely. Thank God, we never see anything in the first couple of categories, which is murder, sex offenses, and robberies. So it's, yeah, it's really good. You guys are doing great. Citizens are doing great and keeping a good watch out for things, so.
And that, that's a key component. If you see something that doesn't look right, by all means, don't hesitate to call us. That's what we're here for. And, you know, if we have you as our eyes, where we can't be on your, your street or your avenue, where we're doing our neighborhood controls, and we call in, it only takes a hot second for some of our cars with any rocks to come up, or for somebody to come across the beach. Yeah, so we, we can get here quick, with this being a barrier of island, and we shut the bridge off and get somebody in, and I mean, you saw this the other day. Get them, get them away from the wall.
If you can run, you're not gonna hurt anyone.
So we definitely appreciate all the citizens giving us their, their feedback and giving us tips and, you know, concern about people who see traffic through your neighborhood or something that just doesn't look right. Because that, that helps us do our job even better and provide you with the best quality law enforcement that we can.
Counsel, we have any other comments or questions from the sheriff? Citizens? Yes? Sheriff, I'm just gonna have you just step right by that doorway, see if anyone from Kelly here speaks, and then you can answer his question.
Hi, I'm Mike Kelly, 2740 Hibiscus Drive West. Quick question, maybe it'll be a monthly question. Since you guys have the couple right now has a double turn in the light, do you have any vendor vendors at all that have been towards you? Are you getting any accidents at that double turn?
As of right now, it's actually been a mute point. People aren't actually paying attention to all of that. I think it threw people off. With that being the major intersection the way it is, it's kind of difficult to let people know that it's changed. Like, in residential areas, they add, like, a stop sign, a four-way stop, and, yeah, they put up the orange flags. It caught me off guard the first time I came through, but I, I think that most people now have gotten used to it, or at least are paying attention to the lane markers. But there haven't many, many crashes that have increased, or it's, that has caused a problem.
Some words, excuse me, the worst, who knows?
We're hearing, I'm hearing that there's hesitancy on merging, and there's people that are kind of getting into that after they made the turn, and they're getting there, and they don't know what to do. So let's keep our fingers crossed. We may have to relook at this after, you know, as we get into the busier season here. Glenn?
I think there was some confusion because there's an extra green light up there, too. I think we were going back there. One thing I've noticed, though, is I have yet to see traffic backed up past your island. Now, everything's, we're trying to that island now, and it's like everything else. You have a curtsy, it's a long way, but there's a couple of crimes.
And if you just have one thing to add, well, we have Sergeant Smith with us now. Our last sergeant got transferred, so this is Sergeant Smith, who will now be out here pretty much twice. Sergeant, we're doing a bit, Jason, it's nice to meet you, folks. I've been out here since Halloween, so I'm looking at the next.
You've got our most exciting month that we've ever had, like, in the last 30 years, so. Welcome, Sergeant.
That's only for to work with you all and all see you next evening.
Wonderful.
And again, just to say, if there's anything you folks either call or you see us out on the street, I mean, don't be afraid to go, which will help you.
Mary Christie's still a man, woman, and the PCSO. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Patty, we have this down here, item four? Down by the, we have a presentation, so you can't get it down here? Okay, good, all right. So item four, we have a presentation of the Florida League of Cities. Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks, Glenn. Okay, item 3B. Let me introduce our new Fire Chief, Chief Jeffrey Davidson. And he's a little bit outside, and I understand that you and Fred Riley have a little bit of history from Haynes City, so that's good to hear. So you've got the mic. Welcome.
Mayor Riley's mayor, Hamilton. Attorney Fred Riley, City Manager Lee, and Party Commissioner Chris Allen, and most importantly, is the citizens and the community that we serve. My name is Jeff Davidson.
Jeff, you gotta talk right into that mic. Okay, there you are.
I'm honored to be able to see you. My name is Jeff Davidson. I'm the Fire Two here, serving Belle Air Beach, Fire Chief for Pinellas Suncoast Fire Rescue District. Chief Mike Burton recently retired after 46 and a half years of service, so we wish him the best. I am in my 34th year of service, and God willing, I'll be here for a very long time. That's what it's all about for me, is service, and we're here to serve the community. So anything that we can do for you, please let us know. We really want to get to know everybody, and for you to meet the people that serve you as well. I don't have any business cards yet. This is only my fourth week here, but I promise, next meeting, I'm gonna have enough that way I can have some contact information for you. Just to give you a little, some of the activity for the month in November from the Fire Department, we responded to 18 emergency calls per service. 12 of them were medical-related, and we have our average response time is 4 minutes and 34 seconds on the medicals. We had six fire run calls, and our average response time there is 4 minutes and 56 seconds. And we will provide nothing to you as much as possible, and look forward to working with each and every one of you and getting to know each and every one of you myself. Again, my name is Jeff Davidson, and thank you very much for having me.
Just to let the record show, Robin Aki came in at 6:22. Chief, I said to Captain Burton, Chief Burton, when he was here, I invited him, you can come if you'd like. Did that, that's always open to you, that microphone, okay? We can have you speak if you'd like after the sheriff or before the sheriff, depending on the schedule. All you have to do, that's Patty Gendry over there, she's our city attorney. You just give her a phone call if you want to speak. Just let her know, she'll put you on that agenda. If there's some month you don't want to speak on, you don't have to do that. But you're always welcome here, okay? And we appreciate what the, what the Suncoast does for us, the Suncoast firefighters. And you have, as I told you outside, you've got an incredible group of people, and I know you're gonna be a good chief, so all the best.
Thank you. Thank you, officer.
All right, now we're off to item four. I'm gonna read this up here, because I'm not gonna take the paper down, then we'll go do the presentation. So we have a presentation on Florida League of Cities Certificate of Completion for the Leadership Academy, to Vice Mayor Dave Gaddis. And what this is, this is a component of the EMO Leadership Academy. It uses MBTI as Prominent Assessment Tool that helps in our understanding of ourselves and one another in order to be best a city leader possible. So, David, if you would.
David, on behalf of the League of Cities, I'm presenting a certificate of completion. Well done.
All right, we move to the public hearing portion of the meeting. This is item number five. This is consideration of ordinance 21-02 in ordinance of the City Council of the city of Belle Air Beach, Florida, providing for the amendment of chapter 86 signs of the city code of ordinances. Providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for the amendment of chapter 86 signs of the city code of ordinances. Providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for separability, providing for the repeal of old ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion, please? Thank you. Motion by Glenn Gunn, second?
Second.
That was a tie, I'm gonna go Dave here. Gaddis seconds, Clankum.
My feeling, and I expressed it before, or is that this was just overkill? This goes, and I think there's some other opinions in here, but I think we just, I think the pendulum swung a little too far the other ways. But it's a little bureaucracy, a little mockery, or something.
Any other comments?
I'm gonna, Frank, jump on, Mr. Gunn, comments about the green, extra green light being too much? This is too much, David. So it's just, it's, it's just overwhelming.
Well, I'm gonna do something I rarely do, which is to change my opinion, but I have changed my opinion. I said to try and move this thing forward. We put a lot of effort, and Fred Riley put a tremendous amount of effort, and this is not for his lack of effort in any way, shape, or form. I had a conversation with Fred the other day. Every time I look at this thing, and it is 30 pages long, I see something else. And I know, I'm not sure if everybody's reading every word of this thing. It's hard sometimes when you get to the end, but I called up Fred, I said, "Fred, I think we banned the American flag." And we did, okay? And we banned your little security signs. I drove around yesterday in the city, and it was, like, protected by ADT. We banned those, too. Glenn sometimes speaks of the law of unintended consequences, and I think we may have hit it here. I think this one needs a little bit more work. I'll make an offer to this council if they want it, okay? Because I, you know, I am an attorney, and I read through this stuff as an attorney does. I'll be happy to sit with Fred Riley and try and clean this up, but I have to join you. I don't think this one is quite ready yet for us, so I think I have to say we have to defer this at this point. That's where I'm at. Counsel? Leslie?
Things that were in the previous sign ordinance that aren't in here, that I think should be in here, are the number of signs you can put on a property, and the time you can put them on, you know, so, so much in front of an election date. It says ballot issues and qualified candidates may display temporary political signs. We haven't even had qualifications for the next election, and there's signs of already.
We also don't have a sign ordinance right now, so there's no sign ordinance. We repealed it last July of 2020, so.
But I think, I think it needs a little more work.
It, it does, yeah. And, I mean, again, I took a ride around our city yesterday, and, I mean, people have welcome signs. That's a nice thing to have on your house. We'll be able to have that. You know, you're not gonna be able to have "Go Bucks." You're not gonna be able to have that sign. I don't think that's what we wanted. I think we do want to limit the signs, as Leslie said. We want to have a certain limit. I mean, I think a yard full of, other than campaign time, a yard full of signs is kind of an eyesore. But there's a happy medium over here, and there's just a few things we missed. I don't think this is that bad, and it doesn't bother me that it's 30 pages long. I just think there's a few more refinements that are necessary here. I don't think this needs a lot of work to be ready for, for prime time, but I think there's also gonna have to be a break-in period, too, because, you know, I don't want to see Danny Doherty charged with going out and ripping up welcome signs. We're gonna have a room full of people that are gonna be very upset, and rightfully so.
I noticed that, that there's no, there's no timeline. As soon as you qualify, you can have a sign out there. That's around 90 days. I don't know if everyone wants signs for 90 days, but I did see a problem with that. I'm probably looking for clarification on the repeal. I don't recall repealing an ordinance, because it's still on the books. What I recall is choosing not to enforce the ordinance. So we have an ordinance. We're just choosing not to adhere to it. That's, that's what I'm seeing. As far as this goes, I agree it is overkill. I agree it is overkill. I was prepared to vote for it anyway, because we were pushed the forty-five days. Someone called me about that earlier this evening. I was on the fence, and I'm gonna have to vote against it.
And just so we're clear, I think I said repeal, let me change my word there. So our motion back on July sixth of twenty-twenty, actually, a motion by Dave Gaddis, said to temporarily suspend political sign enforcement for further consideration. The reason why it was done, and I'm gonna raise the explanation here, City Manager Reeves advised that this agenda item was generated by citizen complaints. We had two citizens come in, one complained about the city, actually, both of them complained about the city manager asking to remove signs, in one case removing the signs. One gentleman was an attorney, he was very nice, but very firm in telling us what our liability could be, and he said, I want this to be a learning experience, but I want you guys to fix this. And we, and he worked with Fred Riley, and we did. This passed unanimously, and I'm looking at this right now, being Gaddis, Shirley Swope, Aki, Gunn, and Manzo, all voted yes to do this. So we're suspended on the sign ordinance, okay? I have, and we need to clarify this whole thing politically, because I've said it a million times when we've done, and I don't want to debate too much tonight, but you should have a right, okay? There's, I'm not even gonna mention the candidates, but there's people who are favoring certain candidates for twenty-twenty-four. We've seen these banners in people's houses, or signs in people's houses. If you want to urge your candidate to run for twenty-twenty-four, so be it. If you want to urge somebody to run for governor, they may not be qualified in the sense that the commissioner has stamped it. I mean, there's a person we're supporting for Congress right now, and she hasn't qualified yet, because qualifying hasn't opened, but I'd love to put a sign saying, I support so-and-so. I don't think that's too much to ask. I don't think it's too much to ask to say, if you have a favorite, you know, thing, if you want to just say, you know, whatever, Certain Lives Matter, or what have you, you have the right to put that sign in there. As I drove around yesterday, I think I saw one house that had two signs. They had a support the blue, and someone had a lawsuit. That was, I saw one house with two signs. That's all I saw. I mean, this isn't a city, yeah, sure, I'll get here later next. There's not a lot of people that have a million signs, so I think we don't have to solve a problem that we don't have, but I don't want to say to people, you can't put a welcome sign out, or let's go Brandon sign, if that's prerogative. I mean, you can put it out there if you want to. It may not be what we want, but Patty, Rita Swope is on the line, wants to speak, she's recognized.
Patty, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can we make that a little louder, so they can hear in the audience?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I expressed my concern about other people with legal background, working with our city attorney on this. We need only one attorney, because that's what our city pays for. And I'm concerned when you start to get too many people in there with different legal opinions, if we need to go outside for a different opinion, then I'm all for that, but I don't agree with that part. I, too, have been around the city, and there are a number of homes with a couple of signs in there, more than just the one that you mentioned with Back to Blue and, and whatever other sign you stated. But there are a lot of homes right now with multiple signs. I, too, have been getting calls and complaints about these signs being up so early, since nobody's actually legal applied for to run yet. And so there are a lot of concerns among our citizens at the present time, definitely a lot.
Okay. Just want some counsel, yeah, Glenn?
We're operating kind of in a vacuum right now. I can go with the forum for this thing, but I would, I would throw out that I think we need to reinstate the old ordinance until we resolve this thing, because it's, it's ironic to me that, well, we don't have forty-five day limit anymore, we're not quite there with the qualified candidates, and we're operating in a vacuum. So I would, given the circumstances, we're getting close to an election, I would like to go on record and say, I'd like to reinvolve all aspects of the old sign ordinance until this gets resolved. I think we've kind of moved past the concerns we had from the old ordinance, and we have some sensitivities to that, and kind of know how to navigate those inconsistencies.
To bring back the old sign ordinance will require a resolution, which we can't do on the fly tonight, so we can do that. There's a matter of what you do with existing stuff. Don't go down this road. If you want to bring back the old one, that's fine. We can bring the old sign ordinance back in, but the old sign ordinance was exactly what I believe Citizen Alphandulov said he might have fixed. So I wasn't privy to that discussion, but a deal is a deal, and if a deal was made that we're gonna fix it, and now we're bringing it back and starting enforcing it, then we're not really living up to our bargain. I wasn't privy to it, the city attorney was. To address Rita Swope's comment, I offered my services free of charge to the city, because I want to see this thing get done right. If those services aren't wanted or appreciated, no problem, I have plenty of work. So I offered it, because I think, sitting down with Fred Riley, he and I could bang this thing out fairly quickly and bring you something that you will be able to vote for. I've been the one who's made the most comments on this thing, because I'm looking at it from my legal perspective, but we have another attorney on this council. We can't both meet with him. Whoever wants to meet is fine with me. I offered, it's up to the council if you want to take it or not. I won't be hurt if you don't, so I just wanted to offer it to myself. Counsel, any other comments before I open it to the citizens? Yeah, Glenn?
Just for clarification purposes, when we suspended the existing ordinance, was that part resolution?
This was.
Was.
Resolution twenty, twenty-dash-eleven, resolution of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, relating to Section eighty-six dash sixty-five political signs code ordinances, providing for findings, providing for temporary suspension of enforcement of Section eighty-six dash sixty-five code ordinances, providing for separability, providing for applicability in conflicts, providing for effective date, providing for sunset date, providing for qualification, temporary suspend signs. That was it, that's what we had, and that was July sixth, and it has been suspended ever since. Code enforcement has not happened. I know I've seen, you know, signs that would probably violate the old ordinance that were in place, and they weren't, it wasn't being enforced, and rightfully so. So we were at seven to zero, so that's where we were at with this.
So there were no conditions or constraints?
I just have, these are the minutes, these are the minutes that Patty had, so I just print it out this page. I don't have the, you know, we had what was behind it, I didn't print that out, but that's where we're at, so.
I would be in favor of table this, or whatever the prep for is, and working on it. I don't have a problem with any of you guys who have the most to volunteer to work with Fred. I mean, I've never had a problem, Glenn, when you've worked one-on-one with Lynn or Fred, I mean, it doesn't matter your background, if you're willing to take the time. I wish I had the time to volunteer and do it, but I don't, so I appreciate when you guys do have the time to volunteer. So if you happen to have a background where you can read through the legal jungle faster than me, without having to think about everyone, then I'm fine with that. So I, I, too, think there's some flaws in this. I had mentioned the number of signs at the city council for the work session, and I had never seen it in there, but, so that's something, because otherwise, you know, on the corner lot, you could technically put two, one for each street, but we said that that wasn't allowed, but nothing in here says that. So I think there are some loopholes that need to be fixed. I don't think we should throw it out just because it's long. If not, half the laws and ordinances and resolutions in any city would be thrown out because of length. Size doesn't matter to me, as far as the number of pages. And I think we should table it and work on it. Fred already put so much time into this, I don't think we should lose the momentum.
Are you making a motion to table?
I'm making a motion to table.
A motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Frank Banker, open to discussion. On motion to table only. Totally support you. You're not, we should not throw the baby out of the bath order. This is a good ordinance. It covers most everything. Problem is, with it being the size that it is, every time, and this is me looking through it, okay? And I gotta think that citizens are gonna have the same kind of confusion. I looked through it the other day, I'm like, oh my God, I don't, we consider a flag a sign, you can't put an American flag up. Or you certainly can't put a flag that says, don't tread on me, or Green Bay Packers. That's not what we intended. We also, your favorite sentence, I love my chihuahua. I still can't put that sign outside, and I want to say that I can put my, I love my chihuahua sign out. It's not my, I love my chihuahua sign that's gonna get this city in trouble. You know what the signs are that are gonna generate problems. And if somebody wants to say, you know, a Christmas-type sign and stuff like that, a religious sign, and we say it's not, it's prohibited, or just a general sign, you know, whatever, so-and-so is God, whatever, that's allowed on a regular basis, and I think that's a total abridgement of your First Amendment right. And I think if somebody puts that in, they may very well be challenging you to do something. We pull it out, you know, welcome to federal court. I, this doesn't need a lot to fix. It really doesn't. I mean, we could probably fix this with a few sentences, I think, but we can't fix it on the fly, and we can't fix it when it's up for second reading. So I would agree to table it. You could reject it, and then we can revive it, that's the other thing. I don't agree with going back to the old ordinance. That's, that's a problem ordinance. Clinton?
I think we're just kicking the can down the road on this thing. I, the outcome is exactly the same as if we don't, if we call the question, let's clear this one off the books, if you want, or revive it and start over again, do it. Let's call the question, and then my follow-up to that is, depending on which way this goes, do we move back to the old ordinance or not?
Can't call the question until I open it to the citizens, but we can call it after it comes back. So we can make that motion afterward. Any other citizen, any other council comments on the motion to table only?
Well, I would say, instead of calling the question and voting on it, it would be better to table it, because I think you would kick it less farther down the road than if you completely get rid of it and start over. So I think if you fix the problems, you'll get to a solution a lot faster than starting over.
We've been at it how long now? I mean, you could use the existing as a template to go move forward still, but it, it still resets the clock, you still need two readings. Even exactly the same.
And I agree with you, but why not do all that with this one, instead of?
Because I'm thinking, my thinking is, we call the question, if it fails, we go back to the starting, but that gives us a reason to go back to the old ordinance in the interim.
It all started because the old ordinance had flaws. So again, why are you going back to the beginning, when we already realized the beginning was the problem, and we've already made headway?
Because we understand.
One person in time, go ahead.
Sorry.
Robin, big Glenn.
Now, as I said, I think doing that, you're going farther back, and you're wasting more time. And you're talking about kicking the can down the road, you're just pumping it down.
The inconsistencies are well-known, and we understand how to navigate them. We've played through those sensitivities, and the living proof is, the existing ordinance has been suspended for over a year, and we have not had a crisis.
Yeah, but then you're talking about reinstating the old ordinance, that if it wasn't stated the whole time, we could have had a crisis.
Because I think we need to fill the vacuum. We need something in the interim. It's taken us a year just to get to this point, where we're still pushing the can down the road, and we're operating in a vacuum. We don't have a forty-five day, we don't have qualified candidates. At least with the old ordinance, we can clear up some of these inconsistencies, and, God, look, the more we down the law, we kind of pick and choose the major issues.
I think you're kind of picking and choosing, an hypocrisy here, because two months ago, you didn't mention the forty-five days and the ninety, or the qualified candidates. All of a sudden, because a candidate you may not agree with has a sign up, now you see a problem?
Because I think this whole thing is being orchestrated to get around the qualified candidate, okay? If you excuse my perception of the situation.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, I'm gonna call point of order on that, because I'm the only candidate out with signs. I follow the law. Some people got, don't like it when you follow the law, but I follow the existing law. Forty-five days is absolutely unconstitutional, okay? So if you want to stick to a forty-five day, by all means do it, but the signs that are out are not coming down. Period. That's my position. Take them down, deal with the consequences, it's an election campaign. So don't go back to your old thing, because that's exactly what got us in trouble the first time. Anyway, this is a motion to table. Let's, let's just talk about whether we should table it or not table it, and then, because I think we're getting into a discussion of the ordinance itself. So right now, what's on here, is should we table it? Speak in favor of tabling it, or not in favor of tabling it, and we've all went a few times, so I'm gonna recognize Dave Gaddis.
Okay. First off, I'd like to apologize to all of you for the mistake that we made. You shouldn't have to look at signs for a hundred and five days. That's how long they're going to be out there in everyone's lawn. It's not Beller Beach, this is not what we came here for. Forty-five days, sixty days, whatever, a hundred and five days, that you're gonna see one candidate sign out there on lawns. I'm going to, I'm gonna vote one way on this, and no matter what, the outcome is not going to fix the problem. I think that, I agree with Mr. Gunn, I think it was intentional. Welcome to Beller Beach.
So what they'll have you believe is that, back on July sixth, twenty-twenty, I knew I was gonna run for mayor again. Now, if any of you knew me, okay, you knew that that decision wasn't made until I saw the Halloween spectacle out on the patio in the back, okay? I didn't make my mind up, and you could ask anybody who knows me, ask June Van Skoy, ask Debbie Mall, ask Rick Shott, they're all the audience tonight. Come on up here and tell me if I'm lying. I had no idea in July of twenty-twenty, this was no great game plan. I will tell you that forty-five days is unconstitutional, it's arbitrary and capricious. Particularly when you let certain supporters put Trump banners that covered their roof and were visible from Clearwater, and didn't say a word, and didn't have the, you know, what's to enforce the law, had another [inaudible] there, put Trump twenty-twenty-four banners, Trump twenty-twenty-four signs on his property. I don't know, is Mr. Trump qualified for twenty-twenty-four yet? I don't believe so. So cut the nonsense, folks. This is about tabling. I want a discussion right now on whether we should table or not. You can come back to the ordinance if it survives the motion to table. Yes, we're tabling, no, we're not tabling. Speak only in favor of that. Please, let's keep this discussion where it has to be, and if it survives the motion to table, then we'll come and vote on the ordinance. Robins made this. Who hasn't spoken? I want to get those opinions. Anyone else wants to go?
Is there a motion to table right now?
Yes, motion to table.
It's not debatable.
No, it's not, it is absolutely debatable.
Motion to table is not debatable.
Oh, it, yes, it is.
He's going to vote.
No, he doesn't.
I believe so.
Just one second. Postpone the discussion for a certain time, you need a second, and it says it's debatable. That's what my chart says, and I need a majority to approve it, so. Look at it, I mean, it's my chief chief, if you want to look at it. We can call and look up the actual rules of order, I mean, it might take ten minutes to find it, but I, I think we're at the conclusions. If you want to stop the meeting for it, I mean, do we have much more discussion on motion to table? Citizens? Counsel? Patty, take a voice vote on motion to table. Yes vote, we'll table this indefinitely, until revived. No vote, we'll not table it, we'll consider, and we'll bring it to a vote on the ordinance itself, section. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Say, did you have citizens' comments on table?
On tabling only, yeah. You can speak in favor of tabling or not in favor of tabling. Yoli or Darryl?
Yoli or Darryl, for one thirteen, twelve street. And first, I have a question, you can answer it then. Where in the ordinance does it say about qualifications? Because I've read through it, and I must have missed it, and I did not find anything that said about being qualified or the forty-five days. But nonetheless, I do agree that it has to be tabled, it should be tabled. It is, I'm personally really offended, that's the discussion tonight, who the council thinks they are to tell me that I cannot have a sign more than forty-five days on my lawn, if it meets the other requirements, just because you don't happen to have been ready, or you didn't put your sign up. I, if I'm ready, and the sign meets a requalification, and it's a political sign, I should be allowed to put it up. Now, if you, as a council, suspended this ordinance for this year because you were pending a lawsuit, a possible lawsuit, because it was unconstitutional, then this is your result. Fix it, complete it, and put it in. Going back to the old ordinance is about as ridiculous as I can, I can even think. I mean, I'm offended that we're wasting so much time on back and forth, and a hint about conspiracy, please.
Point of order.
What's the point of order?
Point of order.
What is that?
Hang on, hang on, we have a point of order.
I don't know where the conspiracy came from. It has nothing to do with tabling this motion.
Okay, I don't find the point of order. There's, yes, let's stick to tabling it, but there's nothing wrong with saying conspiracy, we're addressing the comment that was made. But the comment right now is just on tabling, so let's just talk about tabling.
I support tabling.
Okay, wonderful. John Hancik.
John Hancik, twenty-second street. I'm in favor of tabling this. I've read through it. I've read through it. It's still broke. It needs to be fixed. But I'm gonna concur with the previous speaker. You're not gonna take my First Amendment rights. No way, no how over my dead body. I fly a flag 24/7. I have the right to put a sign in my yard even if it's above the easement. You can't tell me I can't do that. You can tell me size, whatever. You and nobody else will take my First Amendment rights or my constitutional rights that I defended for you. Thank you.
June Van Skoy.
June Van Skoy, 7th Street, Bel Air Beach. Numerous times, I've heard this mayor offer his legal services to work with the city attorney. And this council has continuously voted to try to stop that, but yet they keep saying, oh, it's the bills, the bills, the bills. But how many hours have we sat here on this particular issue? How much legal time have we spent on Fred Riley when this could have been settled and figured out within three hours? How much money have we paid the city attorney to work on this ordinance? When you have the city's mayor, who's an attorney, willing to sit down with the city attorney, work this out and it still comes in front of the council for voting on? I don't understand what the issue here is other than trying to play politics, okay? This is all about saying there are all these people tax dollars, tax dollars. Instead of trying to beat power struggles, tax dollars. Remember that, everyone, tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Yes.
Tony Gallo, 2228 Denado Drive. You know, we've had a tradition here with that 40 day, 45 day limit. I think it would be beneficial to the city if the candidates, whoever they end up being, would agree that perhaps it's in the best interest of the city, of its citizens, to abide by that 45 day, whether it's on the books or not. Because this is a respectful thing to do for this city as opposed to, hey, it's not the law. It is the law and I'm gonna do whatever I wanna do. Stick with the 45 days for this citizen's sake. No one wants to see signs for four months, whatever it is. Table it. I favor that.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Anyone else?
I do.
Bring him back to, I'll go ahead.
Thank you, Gallo, 228 Denado Drive. I've never spoken to you in the past, but I can ask two questions and correct me if I'm wrong. In hearing you tonight, you were telling me that two citizens came up and complained, one of which was an attorney, and you changed the ordinance without a doubt. To me, that sounds like you're being bullied. We're being bullied. Can you answer that?
I'll answer, Bill, I'll answer it when it's our turn to speak. You have the floor right now.
So we're being bullied by two people that came up and complained? You changed our whole ordinance because two people complained of the entire city? And was that an attorney and an actual citizen?
Thank you. Anyone else? I have a gentleman in the back here. Patty, are you going back to Rita?
I believe so.
I'm not on the council at this point, I'm on citizens.
I was quite involved, so I was just trying to get your attention.
Okay, we'll come back to her. Go ahead, sir.
David Gardella, 705 Harbor Drive. Happy to be a fire commissioner of Bel Air Beach. I would like to just say, Mr. Gallo said he has some civility here. We can have the two candidates or whoever is gonna be running through an election. I buy by the 45 day. I mean, I find that ironic. You live in a city. You can't put a boat trailer in your front yard, you can't put an RV in your front yard, you can't park on the street or are gonna allow littering basically for three, four months every four-year election cycle. And that's excessive. Whether it's 45 days, 30 days, 16 days, we've gotta come up with something other than what we are able to do at this point. It just goes against what you expect the city of Bel Air Beach to provide for residents. That's all I wanna say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Debbie Mall.
Debbie Mall, 115 Cosway. I am in favor of tabling this. I'm a little bit disappointed because you guys are all focusing on political signs. There's much more involved in our community than just political signs. And y'all did this with the sign you put out front. Nobody stopped to think, oh, we put a digital sign in front of City Hall. Now, what have we done? We've opened up Pandora's Box. We're again being very short sighted and you all are only thinking about the political signs. We live here 365 days a year and we need a sign ordinance that covers all of that. And the gentleman, by the way, because I've spoken with him, because he was originally helping myself with the umbrella suit before you filed yours, Mr. Mayor. He is a constitutional law attorney and he is a resident of our city. And he's a very brilliant man, so he knows from whence he speaks. And I think we should be listening to him. I mean, don't think that we should bring back the old motion because of the old statute. We're going to be in legal trouble there if we do that. And we'll just make more work, but I want you all to quit discussing. I think that the qualification period ends December, it is December 15th. What are we, nine days, 10 days away from that? Y'all need to look beyond 10 days for having such. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm gonna bring him back to the council. If Rita wants to speak, go to her first, she had her hand up. This is on tabling now, so let's confine this discussion to tabling. You're in for or against tabling? I wanna get, hold this question to me.
Did you want to speak?
No, I want to be a thank you, Patty.
Okay, anyone else on tabling the motion?
I would say that I love to listen to the citizens and they seem to all favor tabling as in there's something wrong, we need to fix it. So I think we should honor what the citizens are saying and say that we may not like the ordinance we have now, there may need to be things added, there may need to be things taken away, but the problem is it's not ready right now. So whatever that is, we need to fix it and that's what tabling will do.
I'm in favor of your tabling motion. I am not in favor of going back to the old thing. There is no such 45 day rule as a construct of Bel Air Beach. Wake up, people, wake up. You're coming up here and giving away your First Amendment rights that guys like John Hanzek fought for and some of his comrades died for. You're giving that up? City has one lawsuit on trampling of federal rights and you want to have more? Taking signs out of the ground? We got in this trouble because our city manager went out and ripped signs out of the ground. Political signs, that's how we got there.
Mayor, I wanna make one thing clear.
Go ahead.
I did not take anyone's signs. It was a complaint that was made. You keep saying I took somebody's signs. I didn't take anybody's signs. I went to the individual, asked the gentleman, told the gentleman the code and explained to him that there was a complaint and there was a 45 day. I have never touched anyone's signs, but you continue to say that. So make sure you have your facts before you say stuff.
Okay, here's a fact. Under color of title, you asked him to remove a sign and under threat of the code. And that's a federal 1983 offense and that's what Mr. Athandoulos was gonna sue us for. I don't know the man, I've never met him and I don't think I ever spoke with him, although I do think he came to our council meeting once, but I didn't speak to him directly. I don't know him. I wouldn't know him if he was here tonight. But that's what got us to table this along with Mr. Levens, who twice was told to remove his signs. And when they told him to take one sign out, he put two in. And that's courage. So I'm all for table. Let's, anybody else wanna table this before? I'm gonna call this as a voice vote. I want people to go on record on this one. So I'm not a single, I'll call the roll, I'm sorry, Patty. Anyone else before we bring, Robin has the last word, of course, because you brought it.
Go ahead and go.
So here we have a motion to table this. Motion to table, we'll postpone this item five indefinitely until it's revived and then I will ask you afterwards if you wish for me, as Glenn Dunn does all the time, to work with the city manager. Do you want me to work free of charge with your city attorney? If the answer's no, believe me, I'm not hurt. I got a lot to do right now. Patty Gentry, please pull the roll. A yes vote tables it.
Councilmember Aki?
Yes.
Councilmember Banker?
Yes.
Councilmember Gunn?
Nay.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Swope? Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Yes.
Mayor Mantow?
Yes, so passes, the table passes five to two. It's not an agenda item. I made it offer. I'd like to know how people wish for me to proceed, if you wish for me to proceed. I will work with the city manager and try to clean this up before our next council session, which is in January, providing he has the time. That's free of charge, my donation to the city of Bel Air Beach because I love it. Patty, call the roll on it. That's my offer to help the city attorney fix this, fix any deficiencies.
Another question.
Yes.
Are you gonna shorten it, I hope?
I'll do my best. I've heard your comments and you know, I respect them and we'll do what we can do. I think maybe some of this we might be able to put into the resolution itself and take out. That's just, I think we might be able to do that, Mr. Riley. Not, you know, some of the law and stuff like that, we'll see. I'll do my best and I don't guarantee I'll have it done for January 1st, but I'm gonna do my best, okay? Patty, yeah, just, yes, no, you want me to help or not? It's real simple.
Councilmember Aki?
Yes.
Councilmember Banker?
Yes.
Councilmember Gunn?
Nay.
Councilmember Notaro?
Nay.
Councilmember Swope?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Nay.
Mayor Mantow?
Yes, so it's four to three against and then Fred, you're on your own. I tried to, so you can revise it if you wish. We'll meet with this again. Typically, what we do if we're gonna revise an ordinance, we meet in a work session first and then break it out. There's no more work sessions this year, so the next work session will be in January, probably mid-month sometime, and then we will take it to the, I guess, the February meeting. In the meantime, if anybody wants to try and revive the old one, be my guest. You better be talking about what you're gonna do with all the existing stuff too. That's just a suggestion, not a request. Okay, that concludes item five. Anybody need a break? We're one hour in. Good? Item six. Consideration of Ordinance 21-08, Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida, Providing for Amendment to Section 2-63D of the City Code of Ordinances pertaining to addressing the City Council, Providing for incorporation of recitals, Providing for approval of Amendment to Section 2-63D of the City Code of Ordinances, Providing for copy to be kept on file, Providing for separability, Providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict with here with, and Providing for effective date. This is the second reading. This is discussion pending, this is regarding discussion of pending litigation or prospective litigation in council sessions. First, the motion? So moved by Dave Gaddis, second?
Second.
Second by Leslie Notaro. It's open for discussion. Dave Gaddis?
Motion to table.
Motion to table, okay. Second on the motion to table?
Second.
Twelve seconds, okay. Discussion on mo, Glenn, I saw you looking at Roberts. Did anything change from my understanding? Okay, so we do have discussion.
No, what I'm saying is, my understanding is motion to table. Motion to follow is table.
Okay. Mr. Riley, you know of him? Before we have to take a call time now and research it.
You have a parliamentarian in the master chief there.
It's debatable and would you speak into the microphone?
It is, so the parliamentarian, John Hanzek, is saying it's debatable. Are we accepting it, folks? I can stop the meeting for five minutes and we can look through the book. It's not that hard, or 10 minutes. I mean, I don't wanna have any improper discussion, but I don't wanna cut off a discussion, so.
Well, you just had a discussion on, for half an hour on a motion to table. So at the least, I'd say be consistent.
Okay.
If you want to be 1,000% sure, then stop the meeting and we'll look at the Roberts rules and we'll clarify it. That's the thing to do. I would go for act consistent with what you've done this evening.
Let's do it that way, okay?
That's my suggestion to the entire council.
So we have Dave Gaddis making the motion and Dave Gaddis making a motion to table it. So Dave Gaddis, you have the floor.
I have no comment.
Anyone, anyone else on motion to table?
Yes.
Yes.
I just looked up, Roberts Rules of Order for dummy. A motion to lay on the table.
I take offense at that, go ahead.
Isn't debatable.
It is not debatable.
Not debatable.
All right, so let's, that's it then. It's not debatable. We have motion to table. Patty, pull the roll on that one.
Councilmember Gunn?
Nay.
Councilmember Notaro?
Nay.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Nay.
Councilmember Banker? Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Mantow?
Nay. So it fails five to two. We'll have discussion. Back to Dave Gaddis.
Okay, I will stand behind my initial, the initial offering of this. I think that discussing pending and prospective litigation is inappropriate in a public forum. I think that it puts us in danger and I'm going in for this.
Anyone else?
I would agree exactly with what Vice Mayor Gaddis said.
So the reason why this is here is because in my legal opinion, the existing rule that we have is unconstitutional. And why is it unconstitutional? And I explained this at the work session, explained this last time. And amazingly, some people said, yeah, I hear you, but I don't trust you. Well, you should trust me because I'm gonna read you the federal law in a second. The audience, the citizens, are permitted to speak about pending litigation. This is what's known as a limited public forum and I'll keep my constitutional law class real brief. It's a limited public forum. If you noticed, you come in here, there's certain rules, okay? You can't hold up a sign, for instance. We can make those rules. You can hold up a sign on the sidewalk, but you can't do it here. Can't come in here and swear and curse and yell. Can't do that, right? Even we do that, we get in trouble, we get points of order, all right? Citizens have spoken about pending litigation in a public forum. They've come to that mic and spoke, yet people up here are squelched. We didn't make this law. This council did not make this law. This goes way back, okay? It was bad law then, it's a bad law now, it's unconstitutional. This emanates from the fact that I wanted to make a motion regarding pending litigation. I was told I can't do it and if I do it, it was a violation and everything in the world was gonna happen to me. I'm a lawyer. I could get disbarred if I start breaking ordinances and rules. I wasn't gonna test it, but I am gonna test the law legally because this is not good. You do not lose your rights when you come up here, and I've been preaching this for three years now. You do not give away your rights when you become an elected official. I have just as much rights to speak on the issue as you do. Now, there's a thing called strict scrutiny. When you take away First Amendment rights, there's strict scrutiny. And what that says is it has to be a compelling government interest, narrowly tailored law, to achieve that goal. Compelling government interest, like we can't live without it. You know what our compelling government interest was, folks? This might cost us money. You might say the wrong thing, but our city manager went out and gave an interview to the newspaper and said the wrong thing, dug us deeper, in my opinion, and guess what? He's not prohibited from doing that. And we could go out and give an interview with the newspaper, but we can't speak in here, the public forum that we chair. That's wrong. It's not only wrong, it's illegal. Patty, add this again to the verbatim, okay? I can give you a copy of it if you'd like, okay? I can give you a copy of it if you'd like, okay? So here's what the federal law states. Well, you go from here, Patty. Section 1983, Civil Action for Deprivation of Rights. Every person who under color of any statute, ordinance, regulation, custom, or usage of any state or territory of the District of Columbia subjects or causes to be subjected any citizen of the United States or other person within the jurisdiction thereof to the deprivation of any rights, privileges, or immunities secured by the Constitution laws shall be liable to the party injured in an action at law, suit, inequity, or other proper proceeding for redress. End quote, intended for what goes in the statement. You're violating the federal law. I am your mayor. These are our council members. Here's our vice mayor. They have every right to speak about a lawsuit. The compromise, what I wanted, was to say that the city attorney, if we're gonna speak, should give us a warning, just to remind us that, kind of like the Miranda warnings, anything you say can, will, can will be held against too, or can held against the city. That's what we were asking for. But what we've got here on this thing doesn't fix that problem. It still prohibits us. In fact, in passing this ordinance, we all broke the law not too long ago, when we had a lawsuit here, and we had what was known as a shade meeting. Because according to our current procedure, we're not allowed to discuss lawsuits. We all broke the law, our ordinance. I, I mean, this is beyond ridiculous. John Hanzig, I can salute you. You come up here and you say that you fought and died, your friends fought and died for this, you did too, and we're giving these rights away, and we're banning people from speaking. This isn't China, this isn't North Korea, this isn't some third world republic. This is Beller Beach, United States of America. We're gonna repeal this law, one way or the other. I'm begging you, and I don't beg anyone, to do it the easy way and repeal the law. Tonight's motion should be, we passed the first time, this needs to be defeated. You will not correct the problem by passing item six. You will continue to have an illegal law on your books. I have been victimized by this law. And anyone else who comes up here who wants to speak on this council will be victimized by it. I cannot and will not let that stand in my city, because the next group of people that are coming up here are gonna be subject to the same bad law. Number six needs to be voted no. I yield.
And I would like to ask, why do you think not passing this is better than passing it? Whenever you clearly said that we broke the law during a shade meeting, and this ordinance will allow us to have that shade meeting, but you're saying, "No, no, no, don't, don't pass it at all. Keep it the way that it is." It, it doesn't make any sense at all. I, I'm still.
I have another question. You can't be a little bit pregnant, okay? This thing is still unconstitutional for the reasons I just gave. Yes, we can have a shade meeting, and we still can't speak about litigation. But citizens can come up here and speak about it. We have the right to rebut citizens or give them additional information. Somebody came before, asked some questions, we're gonna, I'm gonna answer your questions at the end of tonight. I'm sorry you have to wait this long, I was trying to do it quicker, but we have the right to rebut what you said up here. Anytime you have an imbalance, where one group in the same venue can do stuff and another group can't do it, I mean, you don't have to go to law school to know that that's not right. That's what's wrong with it, Dave. It's unconstitutional. And the reason why you wanna do it is to save money? Let me quote Glenn Gunn, who said it not once, but twice. We have insurance for this. That's our attitude here. We have insurance for it. So what are you worried about if we have insurance? What are you worried, that I'm gonna say the wrong thing? Or I'm gonna say something you don't like? Now see, that's suppression of free speech, folks. And I'll fight to the death for that, because I never served, I never had the privilege of serving in the armed forces, but that's what the people did, okay? I'll be damned if I'm gonna just give that right away. I'm not giving any of my right, amendment rights away. I'm not doing that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying you're making it far more difficult than it has to be. You have two choices. You don't like either one. You, there's no third option until this vote goes one way or the other.
Repeal the law. That's, it's real simple. Repeal the law. You don't need this law. This is a vestige of prior administrations, prior city attorney. No one in this room has any hands in this that I know of, okay? I mean, Leslie, I don't know when this passed, so I'm not sure. You, you do have quite a history on council, but I think this passed, I think this was even before you started with council. This is an old, this is an old law, and it's a bad law. It's just one of many, but it's a bad law. You get rid of it. You don't try and fix it. It's no good. You're not gonna make it constitutional by saying we have a shade meeting. We still have the problem. I have a motion I wanna bring. It concerns you, concerns Rita Swob, concerns Glenn Gunn, and I can't bring that motion. And I've been trying to bring that motion since October. And I have a letter from the city attorney threatening me that, "Don't bring it. I gotta advise you, don't bring it." That's what it says, basically. It's public record, ask for it, you can get it. Patty will give you a copy. So how can I tell you that's okay? Yes?
Um, it talks about discussing pending litigation in accordance to Section 286.0118 of Florida Statute, which says, notwithstanding the provisions of subsection 1, which talks about open meetings, any board commissioner of any state agency or authority, blah, 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 may meet in private with the entity's attorney to discuss pending litigation to which the entity is presently a party before a court or administrative agency, providing that the following conditions are met. The entity's attorney shall advise the entity at a public meeting that he or she desires advice concerning the litigation. The subject matter of the meeting shall be confined to the settlement or negotiations or strategy sessions related to litigation expenditures. Entire sec, section, sessions shall be recorded by court reporter, dah, dah, dah. So there's nothing unconstitutional about not discussing litigation in an open meeting. It's perf, it's provided under the Florida statutes that we can have.
That's not what I'm saying. That's not what I'm saying, Leslie. I totally agree with what you just read. That's the shade ordinance. That prov, okay, so for everybody in, the citizens, everything we do, we can't, I can't pick up the telephone and call Frank Banker and say, "Hey Frank, let's talk about Tuesday's meeting or Monday's meeting." I can't do it, it's illegal, okay? He can't do it to me. Everything we do under Florida law has to be done in public, which is why we have these extended debates, because we can't talk on the outside, okay? There is a time, and it's very, very narrow, of what Leslie Notaro just read, that we can go in the conference room, we're actually dismiss the, the citizens for a temporary basis, bring the court reporter, and speak about something. And that's lawsuit litigation, that's pending, settling, um, strategy, that we can do, okay? That makes sense, right? Because if I had to discuss this with everybody here in public, like, our, you know, opponents would know exactly what we're thinking, which is not a good idea. That's not what I'm talking about. Although, that's illegal right now, okay? That needs to be corrected, okay? Because we can't have that shade meeting, even though the Flori, get this, folks. The Florida Senate and legislature gives us the right to have, and Miller Beach said, "Nah, we, we don't wanna do that." Why do you think they gave that to you? They gave that to you so you could settle litigation, okay? That's not the problem. The problem is, we are still leaving this, the provision here, where the citizens can come in and speak about a lawsuit, and we can't say a word. This is a limited public forum. We all have the same rights here. We all play pretty much by the same rules. We have unlimited time, we limit the citizens' time. That's actually constitutional. But if a citizen comes up and wants to speak about, well, we have a citizen speaking about growth and, and, and palm trees that are too high, we have the right to rebut that. Well, why can't we do it on a lawsuit? Again, the answer given, the compelling state reason is, "Oh, you might say the wrong word and, um, get us into a lawsuit or make the lawsuit worse." We got into the lawsuit because people said the wrong words, okay? Not this lawsuit, I'm not talking to anyone in particular. That's how we got to a lawsuit, because somebody said the wrong words in the city or did something wrong. So if somebody comes up here and speaks about something, we have the right to speak back. And yes, I, we were gonna put a provision where the city attorney should just read the warning to us, saying, "If you're gonna speak, think twice before what comes out of your mouth, because you might hurt the city." I don't think anybody wants to hurt the city. We're down here to sabotage the city. We sure as hell have that right. If a citizen comes up here and speaks about it, we have that right. And if you don't see that, and you don't understand the Constitution, you're violating the oath you swore when you swore into your position to uphold the Constitution, First Amendment right, freedom of speech. And I'll tell you, there's no higher right than the freedom of political speech and the freedom of religious speech. So watch it when you try and oppose. Counsel?
So to me, I agree with, uh, everybody should have the right to speak. Just because you have the right to speak doesn't mean you should. That's a personal thing, but everybody should still have the right. So I'm all for that part of it, um, to have the right to speak. I'm also, I think we need to fix that problem with the shade, that we should have, be able to have a shade meeting if we need it, even if we never use that. So this, I think, also needs work. Um, I know we already shut down the motion to table it, so I guess, in that case, we'd have to vote no on it and then put it back on drawing board. Is that the process, just to clarify for me?
Yeah, but here's my take on this, okay? We got an election coming up in March. I may or may not be sitting in this chair after March. We're running out the clock on me here. I'm not gonna get to bring this motion. Because if we table this, or we don't fix this, and we don't repeal this, and I can't bring that motion, no one can bring that motion as a citizen. So I've already been stopped from bringing the motion. And this is a unique situation, folks, because no one, no citizen could ever challenge this at this point. Only somebody up here who's been denied their right to speak. And in your case, it's yours truly who's been denied the right to speak. I don't like that. I did not, and I've said this before, signed away my rights when I became mayor, council member, vice mayor. We didn't sign away our rights. I don't give up any rights. I don't know what else to say. This needs, six does not correct the problem. It is not acceptable to me. Still can't bring the motion, but we, we will vote for it tonight, yea or nay, so.
Mayor?
Yes?
Councilmember Swob?
Okay, I'll have Roy Swob, me to Swob, and then Glenn Gunn.
Uh, yes, I would actually like to hear from our city attorney and get his legal advice on it, because we're hearing a lot of other stuff, and since he's our attorney for the entire city, I'd like to hear from him.
Okay, I'm gonna have Glenn Gunn, then I'm gonna move to the city attorney. Glenn Gunn.
I just wanted to say that, in my 26 years in the military as master chief, Uncle Sam tried to cash my check no less than four times, and I prepared to head in line, or with you, to protect persons' rights. I'm not quite sure we're at that abyss right now. My statements about insurance is because that gives us the freedom to make decisions without being pressured or swayed. And that's, we do our best to make informed, conscious, intelligent decisions, and not be swayed or pressured by threats of legal action or whatever. And that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Fred Riley?
Um, I would like to make several comments. First, that the measure this before the council this evening was changed on first reading. It was changed to include the prohibit, prohibition against prospective litigation. So to fully understand this, you, you have to understand a couple of things. One, the, the original version of this referred to pending or prospective litigation, okay? The state law authorizes, as has been said, the, a shade meeting, which is what is called for in Section 286.0118. The effort in trying to revise this was to make the city's ordinance consistent with the state law and make it, and clarify that. So there was absolutely clarity that you, you can meet the shade meeting. I, I would disagree with Mayor Manzo that the previous shade meeting was illegal. I don't think it was illegal. I think it was consistent with state law. And, you know, I, I will not backtrack from that one. Having, having said that, the original version of this allowed you, as the council, if, if this was passed, to discuss prospective litigation. The stumbling block in the discussion this evening is about prospective litigation. So I'm gonna say several things related to just prospective litigation. The, the first one is, prospective litigation, it is a beauty in the eye of the beholder type of concept. If, if there's a dangerous condition that somebody becomes aware of, is that prospective litigation? Arguably it is. That's different from somebody got hurt and, because they stumbled on a, a city, uh, piece of property, and they broke their arm, and now they may file a lawsuit against the city. There, the difference is, one's, one's a dangerous condition, the other is somebody got hurt in an accident because potentially of, due to a condition that the city, um, you know, had, didn't correct. The, the object of the original version that I presented was to give the council the ability to discuss things, so that as a, a principle, the principle thing I was focused on was, how do you address, as a council, the potential for there to be problems that you, people see, and you're taking some action so that you can prevent a dangerous condition? To me, that's a very, uh, good sense type approach to doing things. The, the prohibition part that was in the original code provision is arguably, uh, is a unconstitutional restriction. And I, I would say, in all likelihood, it is an unconstitutional restriction, because you are prohibiting something. And the, the First Amendment is, is very much dependent on being able to discuss ideas in the marketplace, and this is one of the principal marketplaces that the Constitution envisions, is there to be a discussion of ideas in a public setting, and the best idea wins. That's, that's the foundation of constitutional, or First Amendment law. So I, I'm not particularly receptive to the, the current version of this that, that includes prohibiting prospective litigation. The, the original, or the version that I submitted before it was changed, would allow prospective litigation to be discussed, and there would be a, uh, a warning of sorts from the city attorney about making admissions against interest. So let me go back to my two examples. You have no accident, and you have a dangerous condition, and the council wants to discuss what action should be taken, because there's a dangerous condition. That, that should be a freewheeling discussion, because nothing's happened yet. Second example is, somebody tripped on a, the, the carpet that was, um, actually, they tripped on my court, because I didn't want the chair there, okay? And I was negligent in not putting the chair there. What, anybody that's been to these meetings knows, every meeting, I put that chair there. So, but somebody tripped, because I didn't, I have a lapse of memory, I didn't put the chair there, and somebody fell and hurt, and broke their arm. Well, now, the discussion is, it takes a different light, because you have an actual accident, an actual injury, and potential liability for the city. So in that case, the object of having a, a warning to the city council is so that you, you don't have people making what would be interpreted as admissions against interest in a public meeting. And that, that's the policy thing that you're trying to prevent. The question was raised, when this has been discussed earlier, in earlier, uh, city council meetings and workshops, how, how do you discuss things if, if you remove it from prospective, if you delete prospective litigation? How, how do you just, the prohibition? If you delete the prohibition, how do you do this? One of the ways that you do it, and I've, I've done it elsewhere numerous times, is if there was a potential lawsuit or litigation, and, and it had not ripened into, to was a potential lawsuit or litigation, and it had not ripened into pending litigation, then there's a discussion by me, as the city attorney, one-on-one with each of the city council members. That's perfectly allowable, okay? What is not allowable is for me to be a conduit and have discussions with the seven city council members and share each other's opinions. That's something I would not do. I know the ramifications of that. But as the city attorney, it is perfectly ethical for me to have a one-on-one discussion with each of the council members about something that could be forthcoming, that I think y'all ought to know about from a legal standpoint. So that, that's, you know, really what should happen in most circumstances. And if you deleted the prohibition against prospective litigation, then what I hope would happen is that there would be situations where the city council has the ability to discuss something, but chooses to refrain from discussing it, because they don't want to have a discussion where people are making, taking positions and potentially stating admissions against interest. That is the thing that I hope would happen. One of the points that I will make about this, and it applies to quite a few of the discussions that I've heard in my tenure here, is that instead of looking at the code provision and focusing on how you're going to amend it, there has been a distinct tendency to bring in all these other things, and all these other examples, and all these other factors. I have encouraged the city council in the past to not do that. It may illustrate your position, but the, what happens over and over again is, instead of focusing on the provision, you add, continually add factors that make it harder to address the problem at hand, because now there's so many other things that are considered. And the recent discussion this evening about the signed ordinance, is, that's exactly what was done, in my opinion. And it doesn't make things easier to sort out, it makes it far more complicated. So with this discussion, I would encourage you to delete the prohibition against discussing prospective litigation, and clarify the point about pending litigation, and approve it in that manner. So how would you do that? I would say, you would delete the words "or prospective litigation" and keep the rest of it the same. That's my recommendation to you.
Mr. Riley. You address pending litigation, pending litigation. I agree with you wholeheartedly on prospective. You address pending litigation that is eligible, and there's very limited amount of pending litigation that's eligible for a shade meeting. You do not address in here pending litigation that is not eligible for a shade meeting, along my motion, which you're well aware of. That, you leave, by leaving a prohibition, I'm speaking on pending litigation, I would like you to address whether that is, in your opinion, constitutional or not constitutional.
You're talking, it's, if you delete the words "or prospective litigation," then you're clarifying that the shade meeting provision is applicable.
Right, but that's not my question. My question is, pending litigation, we had this very discussion on existing pending litigation. Three citizens came forward, took a mic, one of them actually got sued because of what they said, okay? And that was unallowed to be rebutted because of this prohibition that we have in here. My point to you is, in what I just spent half an hour explaining to everybody constitutionally, is, if a citizen can come up here and give their opinion on pending litigation, that is not eligible for a shade meeting, then the people up here should too. You're saying it's okay for prospective, my argument to you is, it's also okay for pending. And I'm asking you, a city attorney, whether you believe it's constitutional to prohibit pending litigation from being discussed when it doesn't otherwise qualify for a shade meeting?
I think you're splitting hairs. I would apply the shade meeting provision of section 286.0118.
So some stuff can be discussed on pending litigation, and other stuff can, but a citizen can discuss anything?
Yeah.
And you think that's constitutional?
I do.
Then I differ on it. Glenn Dunn.
Why would you want to discuss pending litigation in a public forum? To give away strategies or decisions or whatever? Now going to the, the next question about prospective litigation, I pose this question to a attorney who makes his living defending municipalities in this area against lawsuits. He is the attorney of choice, who's retained by the Florida League of Cities, who defends municipalities against lawsuits. I pose this issue to him. His answer, his short answer, you don't want to go there. You don't want to go there. And speaks directly to admissions against interest. You don't know what's going to be said in the fashion of the moment, a slip of the tongue, or whatever, that can be used against you in following litigation. His point was, and his observation from making a living at this, is that there are only two people who could determine what an admission against interest is. That's a judge and a jury. And his opinion was that many attorneys, many municipal attorneys aren't familiar with all the intricacies and concerns involved with admission against interest. So you just don't go there. Don't, don't, don't take the bait on that. Just be silent and just exercise good common sense.
Let me answer your question as to why. I had the right to bring any motion I want here, as long as it's a legal motion. And it was absolutely a legal motion. I'll clarify my choice of words when I said illegal. It's against our statute. It was not against the state statute. We were fully in compliance with the state statute. Actually, our statute is probably the one that's illegal, because it conflicts with what the state has already given us. You can't make lesser rights than what the state has given you. So I have every right to bring what I want, and so do you, and we've heard all kinds of motions from our council members, and that's what we're supposed to do. We represent the people, and if we feel that there's a valid interest, and there's absolutely a valid interest for this, but it's not gonna get heard, okay? And what I'm hearing tonight is, the people can speak, but you elected officials can't speak on these issues, because you might say the wrong thing, and you might dig us deeper. That is not a compelling state interest. That is not narrowly tailored to achieve the goals. That makes it unconstitutional. That makes it a suppression of rights. And I've been victimized by this one. So I got a dog in this fight. And I begged, and I begged, and I begged, I've been begging for four months, done begging. Fix this law. Repeal it. You wanna listen to your attorney? I don't know who you spoke to. If it's the attorney who's defending this city, the attorney has multiple sunshine issues in Madeira Beach. I'm not sure who you spoke to. But I'm not taking hearsay argument from some attorney who's saying violate the Constitution. You swore the oath, council member, and I swore the same oath to uphold the Constitution. That attorney didn't swear any oath. Not in this matter. So I'm not going with this. This needs to be repealed. That the, I don't, I can't even follow the legal logic. With all due respect, Mr. Riley, you're entitled to your legal opinion. I can't follow that. It's okay to talk about prospective litigation, but it's not okay to talk about pending litigation only when the state allows you to do it in a sunshine law, in a shade ordinance. You told me that you researched all the cities around here, and you couldn't find an ordinance like this. I submit to you, because they know better than us. Because they know this is unconstitutional. Now if you wanna find out the hard way, I'm sure, this always could be challenged. This is bad law. This is suppression of your elected officials. I'm not letting it go. I'm not letting it go. This needs to be fixed. I've asked at least four times for this to be fixed. Now the clock's gonna get run out on this council. This council's term ends at the end of March, whether people are reelected or not. This council will end in its present form, and we get a new council coming in. Some people continue, Leslie and Frank Banker, to continue. And Glenn Dunn. So this needs to be addressed. I'm sorry, I disagree with your opinion. Usually you and I are pretty much in sync, not this time. Not this time. If a citizen can get up there and talk about it, so can we. And if the best you can do is, we might say the wrong thing, we might say the wrong thing on everything we say all night long. That's why we have immunity. That's why you have legislative immunity, so we can get up here and speak freely. That's what it's here for. You're cutting off these people's voices. These people elected me, some of them. And I don't get to represent them, to bring their ideas up for motion. You can defeat this motion. You think it's a bad motion? It'll get voted down. Again, I don't get to bring the motion. I'm not saying anything more. I'm voting no for number six. It's unconstitutional. You vote yes, it still remains unconstitutional, in my opinion. Your opinion's different. That's why there's judges, that's why there's Supreme Courts, because lawyers differ sometimes on constitutionality. I would say, don't go down that road too. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Banker.
If I heard Mr. Riley correct, we should strike some words in this ordinance, prospective litigation.
If we do that, we're not gonna be able to pass it on second.
Well, and the ordinance is, and a good ordinance, so let's just kill it, bring it down.
That's where I thought we were last time, actually. I thought we were gonna kill it, but it's like Jason, it's coming back from the dead.
Yeah, we're an attorney telling us that it's not worded correctly, so why would we vote no?
You can make a motion to table, we can take a vote and kill it. I mean, it's either way, so.
I don't want to make a motion to table, I just want to.
We'll take a vote, okay?
Vote it down.
We have to, we're debating still here, I still have to hear from the citizens, and then we can bring it back to council, so.
I agree with Frank. I'm gonna follow Fred Riley's advice to strike those words, so I'll probably vote no, and then work on it again.
Leslie.
You said you want to strike the "or prospective litigation." Can we do a motion to amend this ordinance and then vote on the amended ordinance?
No, because we have, I don't believe so. I'll defer to the city attorney. We had first reading with it in, and second reading with it out, and that's a sizable difference, as we just discussed for the last 20 minutes. Your motion, your ordinances have to be equal, and we've advertised it this way, so I, you know, it's not like we're changing a punctuation mark or something immaterial. This is, I believe, material, but you're the city attorney, you advise us.
It's a significant change, and the problem that occurs here on almost every measure you take up, is it's debated six weeks of Sunday numerous times. So the reality is, y'all have very, very different views of things, and you have very spirited views of things. If you want to make a change to it, if it's already been changed once, then the best thing to do is direct that another change be made, it be readadvertised, and you have a second reading on the new version of it. That's the best thing you should do, because that gives absolute clarity on what you're doing.
If we change, make that change, don't we need to make two readings of that? Because we are changing it substantially. I think we go back to the original, right? Glenn saying yes, I think so. I think that's the, I think we definitely do two readings and add.
If you want to be 1,000% certain of what you're doing, then I would agree with you.
I defer to you, you're our city attorney. I think it's two.
I have to tell you that. I do my level best over and over again to try and change the code provisions based on the discussion that y'all have. And there were several of these that have come up, that y'all agreed you would go through the process of discussing them in a workshop, so that you could iron all these things out, and then you've done that, and then here we are again, in a second reading of an ordinance change to amend the code, and you go through another complete round of debating it.
That's the legislative process.
I'll say the same thing I've said over and over again, and this relates to the signed ordinances as well. Personally, provided you comply with the law, I don't care what you do. All I want is that the refined language of what you settle on is truly what you want to do. And that is what I suggest you do.
We're not going to, I'm not going to, as a presiding officer, limit discussion on this stuff. I don't care if we discuss this stuff all night long, okay? I really don't. And the reason being is, things do change, people look at some things sometimes, I mean, earlier today, I disagreed on the signed ordinance, I don't wanna keep rehashing that, but I agreed with Glenn Dunn. I didn't agree with him last time we read it. You see different things in it a little bit later. And that's the legislative process, that's the debate process. Unfortunately, or fortunately, Florida says, this is the way we have to do it. We don't get a chance to try and call somebody up and try and win them over on a phone call.
I fully understand that.
Yeah.
And with respect to the signed ordinance, and I'm only using this as an example, y'all have debated it over and over and over again. You've done it in workshops, you've done it in city council meetings, and I, again, will say, I have tried my level best to be responsive to the changes that you've made. I'm not telling you, you shouldn't revisit it and debate things in a council meeting, that is your prerogative to do that.
I think I made it clear that, and we're talking about sign ordinance, we've moved past it, but I said it when we were discussing it, it has nothing to do with you. You've done a tremendous job, I'm trying to get all of that in here, but this is a deliberative body, and it's our job, that we said we were gonna do, to deliberate. And things change, and people see things differently, and somebody suggests something differently. That's the legislative process that Florida wants, and until the state legislature tells us differently, that's the one we have to follow. So this is not a reflect, none of this is a reflection on you.
No. Take me out of it. All I'm telling you is, y'all need to debate things, and you need, the object is to get it right, and to get it constitutional, and make sure what you're doing is indeed going to be upheld if it's ever challenged. That's the objective that I have always focused on. It's frustrating, I'm going to be honest with you, it's frustrating to retread the same stuff over and over again, but that's okay, because the object is to get it right.
Counsel.
I have a question, yes? Is it possible to vote the first, is it possible to set back the clock and do the first round of vote if it's amended tonight?
No.
No, it's not.
Well, we would rather do that.
All right, but we have to go back to the round one. If you can kill it, and then we can bring it up the next meeting, if you want, that's fine.
Another on council, but how about to turn this over to citizens? Citizens, any citizen comments on this? John Hansick.
John Hansick, 22nd Street. First off, I didn't want to make it sound like I'm the only one in here that served. I defer and appreciate the service of all my brothers and sisters in the service. But on this item six, and everything else you're discussing, and Mr. Riley just said it, nailed it, constitutionally correct. That's what y'all swore an oath to. And yet, I'm sitting here, listening to the debate, and I was here for the first vote, and it dawned on me tonight, listening to everybody talking, this item six was politically motivated to suppress an individual. That's my take, okay? That's not right. That's my take, okay? I'm entitled to my opinion. You're entitled to yours. And we can agree to disagree sometimes. But the point is, I don't know how else to say it, I've said it before. Y'all took an oath to serve the best interests of the citizens of this city. And you really gotta ask yourself at the end of the day, if an issue is politically motivated to suppress someone or benefit someone, is that in the best interests of the city? And if I made comments about, oh, that's why we have insurance, I made this comment at the last meeting. If somebody sues us, well in excess of what our liability is... If somebody sues us well in excess of what our liability is, who's on the hook?
We are.
Is that a good return on investment? I don't think so. Please, do what's constitutionally right, and in the best interests of us, we, the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hansick. Any other citizens? Back to council for final comments before we call a vote. Glenn Dunn.
This issue was initially raised by the mayor, as I recall, you brought this forward.
Motion to repeal, correct.
And what we have before us now is just the iterative evolution of that intelligent discussion. And I think, regardless of the opinion, whether we're for or against it, every person sitting up here on this dais makes a decision in what he thinks is in the best interests of the city and the citizens. I'm saying, whether it's one person or the opposite view, that person makes a decision based on what he thinks is in the best interests of the citizens. And just because it doesn't go with just one group's decision or concept of what's right or what's wrong, doesn't make it right or wrong. That's why we have a body up here to make decisions. Thank you.
Folks, there's an old adage, you could lead a horse to water, but you can't make the horse drink. I'm leading the horse to water, the horse don't want to drink. I'm trying. I'll quote a line from my favorite, one of my favorite movies, Pulp Fiction, "I'm trying," and go, "I'm trying," okay? I'm really trying here, okay? I'm really trying. That's all I'm going to say.
I'll add to that. I don't think that repeal is on the agenda for tonight. That is not the case. So, what we have is we have old or new. And based upon what I'm hearing from Mr. Riley, which is slightly different than what I heard from Mr. Riley several times before, he's, I believe that he has changed his mind on prospective litigation. I'm fine with that. Unfortunately, we're in a position right now to where there's nothing we can do about it. You either have to go with the overly restrictive, or you go with a slightly lesser restrictive ordinance. But because the new ordinance is tied to this city council, I would recommend all council members vote no on this. And we go back to the old ordinance, and then we deal with it. That's all I have to say.
Good. Dave had brought this motion, so if anybody else has anything else to add, then I will come back to Dave for a final comment. Go ahead, Leslie.
My thought would be that we defeat this one, removing the or prospective litigation phrase on there, and deal with it that way at our next meeting.
Any other council comments?
You've been against this for, what? I don't know how many work sessions, council meetings.
Since the summer.
I don't know how much cost of weight in these rooms. But now we've got council agreeing with you? It's just...
I will say it again, I don't agree with the mayor. What I will say is, I would rather revert back to what we have, and then try to fix it. But the fix may not necessarily be what the mayor wants. I'm just saying, we'll take another stab at it.
It is not what I want. I want it repealed, period. We don't need it, superfluous, we don't need to say what the rights are that Florida gives us, but Dave Gaddis is correct, there is no motion for appeal tonight, but that's where, that was what I proposed. That gets rid of all issues. Or, alternatively, and the citizens don't have the right to comment on it, I could equally live with that. So that's two options for you, repeal it, or stop the citizens from speaking about it. Anything else? I'll stick by everything I said constitutionally, repeat it. We can defeat number six tonight, but the ordinance that stays on our books, in my opinion, remains unconstitutional. You just heard from your city attorney, and at least part of it is unconstitutional, and in conflict with state law. So, garbage on the books. You ready to vote? Before us is consideration of ordinance twenty-one oh eight, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Bel Air Beach, Florida, providing for amendment to section two dash sixty-three D of the city code ordinances pertaining to addressing city council, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for approval of amendment of an amendment to section two dash sixty-three D of the city code ordinances, providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for separability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading. If this passes, it will become our new law tonight. Ms. Gentry, Clark Gentry, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Spoh?
Yes.
Councilmember Aki?
No.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
No.
Mayor Manto?
No.
This is defeated, three, four to three. Item six does not pass. We stick with our existing ordinance. Thank you, council. That was a good discussion, very good discussion on this. Anybody need a break? We're now at eight o'clock. We don't have much left here, because we'll be going to consent agenda after this. All right, I'll continue then, I'm not hearing any, and I'm going to have to request a break. Consideration, item seven, consideration of twenty-one dash ten, ordinance of the city council of the city of Bel Air Beach, Florida, providing for amendments to chapter thirty, marine structures, activities, and facilities, section thirty dash two, section thirty dash fifty-two, section thirty dash fifty-three F and H, section thirty dash one forty-four two, section thirty dash one eighty-five, and section thirty dash one ninety-one D of the city code ordinances, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for approval of amendment to section thirty dash two, section thirty dash fifty-two, section thirty dash fifty-three F and H, section thirty dash one forty-four two, section thirty dash one eighty-five, and section thirty dash one ninety-one D of the city code ordinances, providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for separability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. Somebody bring a motion, please. It's a Gaddis motion. Second? Second?
Second.
Second by Leslie Notaro, open for discussion. Dave Gaddis first. I defer to the city manager. City manager?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Changes in this ordinance were to add the restriction on electric bicycles on the beach. We updated section on page four, store leave abandoned derelict boats, watercraft, navigable waters. And we updated a section in section four on page six, if any dock wore pile. This was all discussed at the previous meeting. And then, we updated the dates for the slips at the boat ramp. Hundred and eighty days right to occupy shall revert to the city, the boat slip. Let's see, if owner or operator of such watercraft takes work for a cruise of up to ninety days, that's allowed. And then, also a hundred and eighty days for repair. So those were the highlights of the changes. And we went through this at a work session, and we had first reading at the last council. No other changes have been made.
We've not updated since the last council, right? So this is, when you said update, I just was saying, we didn't update it since this is, I want to clarify.
I'm just kind of highlighting the highlights.
Thank you. City manager or council?
I have a question on page six, section H.
It's section four, item H.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's section four, item H.
Okay.
Says any person who may walk there on such structure shall be either removed. It talks about that being or unsafe. What does it mean by any person? I mean, this is private property, I'm assuming?
I'm looking at section four, section four A.
H.
H, maintenance, page six.
Okay, let's answer the question again.
What does it mean by any person? These docks, wars, pile structures are private property, I'm assuming? So how do you get out there and walk on? It says any person.
Well, it says creating an unreasonable bodily injury to any person who may walk on there. That's perspective. I'm not sure what I, what you're asking.
Well, the perspective is it's unsafe, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so when it says any person who may walk there on, this is private property. Are we going to just force our way onto that, the city manager, the code enforcement officer, whoever, and say, well, I'm going to walk your deck and make sure it's, the boards are all firm?
That's not what it's saying.
And you can't do that.
What it says is any person...
What it's saying is that the dock has potential to hurt any person. It's not saying, this is not giving someone permission to go on private property. It's saying, if a person happens to step on this dock, it could hurt them.
Correct, but it says, by injury to any person who may walk there on. Any person who may walk there on.
Correct.
You have to walk on that dock to say,
That is what it says.
Not even close.
If any dock, warf pile, or structure falls into a state of disrepair and becomes a dangerous structure, creating an unreasonable risk, so that would, it should be a pretty obvious...
And why do we have, why do we have the words, who may walk there on?
Because somebody's going to walk there on.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but this is private property again.
I don't think that is relevant to this provision. You're creating a standard. The standard is, is there a dangerous condition for someone that may conceivably walk across there in the future?
Well, that's the better, I guess that's the better question. Who determines that? If I go out there on a boat and I see a dock that I don't think it's safe, okay? But it may be safe. Who determines?
If there's anybody cited for this, then that would, the person that would determine it would be the special magistrate.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, how do you get to the special magistrate? I'd say resident A has an unsafe dock, okay? It doesn't look like it's safe to walk on.
Well, I'll give you two polar examples.
It had, let me just finish. It has a lot of wear on the wood. There's cracks in the wood. But it could still be stable. So how do you determine that it's unsafe? Without actually going on it?
It would be what the code officer observes, and let me give you the two polar examples. One is that there was a storm, and the, there's a walkway that typically would have boards the whole way down the walk, and the structure's been damaged to the point that a number of the boards are missing.
That's fine, and you may, then you can't walk on it, okay? But this says, who may walk? Any person who may walk there on.
Okay.
The stairs are missing, you're not going to be walking.
Well, let me give you my other example, okay? There are several boards, let me change my example. There are several boards that are cracked, okay? So they're not missing, but they're cracked, and they're cracked to the point that somebody observing them could deduct that the cracked boards would lead to somebody falling through if they walked there on. So, that's one example. At the other end of the spectrum, there was a storm, the thing wasn't damaged at all, except a little bit of the paint was chipped off. That's a situation where there's no state of disrepair, well, it is disrepair, but it needs to be painted, but it doesn't create a dangerous structure that creates an unreasonable risk. Those are two different ends of the spectrum. I fully recognize that there's everything in between. And what hopefully you would have, if you implemented this provision, is you would have a code officer that would bring a case if he had a legitimate, bona fide concern that the thing was damaged to the point that it created an unreasonable risk. That's the case he would bring. And then, the special magistrates, the one that would determine, based on the evidence presented, whether there was a, this code provision was violated.
All right, I just, just any dock, and any heavy, for any person who may walk there. I mean, I don't know who's...
It sounds to me, Frank, like, sort of like the state unfit for human consumption. It's kind of like that. It's, if any person happens to get on that dock, there's a good possibility it's going to fall through.
Okay, but why are you getting, if it was my dock, why are you getting on my dock? That's my question.
They don't have to get on your dock, it's a general...
Right, so stay off my dock, it's not disrepair, it's not in state of disrepair.
Well, actually, I'm thinking different.
Hang on, one more time, Frank.
May walk, okay? But it's my dock, okay, and it's sound in my view. So stay off.
This is not talking, this is not giving... This is not giving people permission to walk on your dock. What it's saying is, the whole purpose of this is to keep your dock from falling apart into the water and damaging boats and other people's property. A good, a good reference point is, if you can't walk on that thing without it breaking through, something needs to be done about it, and that's what this is saying. It's not saying everybody's got permission to get on your dock. You're not reading it the way that it was written.
I'm reading it the way it is written.
I'm not sure what you're reading. I honestly don't.
Hang on, hang on. I'm going to move this to Leslie Notaro. We've had back and forth, and we're not supposed to have cross-talk, and this is why, so I let it go. Leslie?
I think you have to read it in conjunction with the first sentence of section H. All permits for docks shall be issued on the condition that such construction will be maintained in a safe condition at all times. This is just what you have to do if it's not in a safe condition. You got to fix it. Remove it or repair it. It's not, it's not like, you know, you have to worry about a trespasser walking on it. It's a follow-on to that first, it says your permits issued on the condition that you maintain it in a safe condition. They have to be read together.
I don't have problems with the first, third, if you just read the existing ordinance. The problem I have is the additional language that we're voting on.
It says it has to be either repaired or replaced, if it's not in a safe condition.
Right, okay, but what I'm saying by saying, by injury to any person who may walk there on.
Well, by any person includes the owner of the dock as well.
Sure.
Any human.
Absolutely. Now, if the owner comes out there and says, whoa, whoa, I need to replace this dock, that's great. But if I'm driving by on a boat, I'm thinking, that dock needs to be replaced, okay?
Well, you know, Dave and I can attest to this from neighbor room docks, that they're quite obvious when four of the boards are in the water, that no person or dog can walk on them. I think it's in reference to those. We're not going to go by and be, that nail is four millimeters too high, I bet that dock is unsafe. It's the ones that are falling in the water, the ones that are bowed, so it looks like this. It's those, and I understand what you're saying, but I think we're being a little too nitpicky. It's just a general saying that, is any person, child, human or not, walked on this, when it's bowed like this, they're going to get hurt.
It's bowed like that, that's fine, but I've had a resident contact me that had code enforcement come out and question their dock, okay, and they're an elderly couple, and they don't use it for voting or anything like that. I don't want our residents being scrutinized because... I don't want our residents being scrutinized because other people don't think the dock looks acceptable, is what I'm saying. Dock is perfectly fine, okay?
They'll look at it and say it's fine.
But they were turned in to have their dock questioned. And I told them, "Don't let anybody go on it".
Well, people turn people in because of their grass and everything else, so it's just another appendage of the, you know, like it turns over because they need to paint their house. It's the same thing.
But the language at work going to pass, is there any person who may walk there on? So if I walk out there and say, "I don't think your dock is safe"?
See, I'm reading as, any person that walks on it wouldn't be able to hold their weight and speak structurally sound. Not that any person is welcome to walk on it. I see what you're saying, I see what you're seeing that, but I think it's written as as far as safety, if a person walked on it. Not a chihuahua versus, you know...
I'm gonna stop the cross-talk. Glenn, I don't wanna speak, so let's go to Glenn, and then we can entertain it again.
Glenn? I was just gonna say, it sounded like there's pretty much consensus for the way it is. There's some concern on this side, but I haven't heard a recommendation on how to change it. So my proposal is that because we have consensus on this thing, for all, I don't think we're gonna change anybody's mind here.
We're not?
Maybe just go to the citizens and then...
I will. I mean, we wanted to debate. Here's Frank, I wanna, I haven't said a word, so I wanna try...
Mayor, just could I? We just had a code case, okay? And I think that's where we're... Maybe council member Baker's misunderstanding. It's not saying that the deputy could go onto the dock. What it's saying is, if anybody walked on the dock, if it's a guest of the house and that dock could cause bodily injury to them, that's what that really means. We just had a code case with the dock last month, actually. The dock was in ill-repair, and we took it to the magistrate. The magistrate determined that the dock was in ill-repair and that it either needed to be repaired or removed. And she determined that they had X amount of days to do that. So it's not saying that you, as a citizen, are gonna walk up to somebody's dock. It's saying, it'd be like a cat. If a cat walked on it and got hurt, it's just bodily injury. It's not, I think that's where we're kind of lost a little bit.
Yeah, Lynn, you kind of said a lot of what I was gonna say. I'll just gonna add a little bit to it, and then we'll go back and see if that's, if it explains it for, you know, for Frank. Frank, I remember the debate last time, and I looked right at Lynn Reeves, and I said, "If code ever goes on a dock, okay, first off, the search is invalid, okay, and the summons and everything else isn't gonna stand", the whole point here is, what generated this was people seeing docks that were in real states of disrepair. You know, in the Supreme Court, they tried to define pornography, and the judge said, "I know it when I see it", okay? You'll know this when you see it, okay? Because this is a dock that's in disrepair. We talked about this last time. You can't go and say, "Oh, you know, you're missing a nail on board number five", and it's, "No, it's in disrepair". Well, first off, they don't have to let the code officer back there, okay? Code officer has to take a boat and look at it from the boat. If your neighbor turns you in, well, your neighbor turned you in, okay? But still, code has to look at it from the road unless you invite him in. If code comes on your property, he can't, okay? You can look from the street, you can look from the water. You can't do anything more.
Or the neighbor's yard.
Or the neighbor's yard, if the neighbor lets you in, yes, if the neighbor lets you in. So that was that. Now, if it's, the way I read this, Frank, is the bodily injury to any person who may walk, it's just that, any person. Is this safe? You know, if my stairs are rotted out and we go, "Wow", like, nobody should ever walk on that thing. It's not me, it's not you, it's like anybody who might use it. I think that's the way I read this, and I didn't really have a problem with this language. If a code officer ever goes there, I believe, I looked at you and I said, "If a code officer ever goes there, as long as I'm here, I wanna see him the next meeting because we're gonna have a problem as a council", you know, you can't do that. So Frank, I'll go back to you.
Well, I just think the words "to" to there on, I should strike.
What's your proposal?
To strike the word after injury "to" through there on.
Fred Riley? On that proposal? Two things, I mean, yeah, second reading and does it change it substantially? It wouldn't die, it wouldn't read differently without it, but I don't... You have to tell us if you, you know, if it's gonna kill it, then let us know. And then he could call it as a motion to amend. But I don't wanna go through a motion to amend if it's gonna kill it, then emotional.
I'll respond the same way I did before. If you're making a change in second reading, then the safest thing, so that there's absolutely no issue, is to continue it and have it deleted and have another reading. That's the safest thing you can do.
Frank, do you wanna make a motion, or do you wanna just go to a vote on this?
I made a motion to remove the words "to" to there on Section 4H.
So before you vote on that, I would encourage you to leave it the way it is. My reading of the legal standard that's created is, I think there is tremendous clarity in the way it's written out. And it doesn't create a private authorization for somebody to walk onto your dock. It contemplates that somebody would be walking on the dock. The standard is set up, so it says, "If any dock or structure falls into a state of repair", that's condition A, and condition B becomes a dangerous structure and describes how it would be a dangerous structure. So I think it's fine the way it is. I would encourage you not to amend it and to simply adopt it.
Frank, it's your call.
I'm making that motion.
Motion is made by Frank Banker to amend, striking the words after, so the, striking the words "to any person who may walk there on", correct, Frank?
Correct.
Okay, we have a second for that motion. Last call, second. Motion to amend is defeated, or done, for going to the second. Back to the motion, the question before us, is there any more council debate before I vote in the city? Citizens? Does anyone like to speak on this? Back to the council, last word will go to Dave Gaddis, but anybody else wanna speak before him? Dave, you have the last word.
Call the question.
If you say "call the question", then it's actually a motion, so I think you just, you have no comment, right?
Nope, no comment.
Thank you. All right, so item seven is consideration of ordinance 21-10 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Valerich, Florida, providing for amendments to Chapter 30 Marine Structures, Activities and Facilities, Section 30-2, Section 30-52, Section 30-53F and H, Section 30-142, Section 30-185 and Section 30-191D of the City Code of Ordinances, providing for incorporation recitals, providing for approval of amendment to Section 30-2, Section 30-52, Section 30-53F and H, Section 30-1442, Section 30-185 and Section 30-191D of the City Code of Ordinances, providing for company kept on file, providing for severability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading. Patty Gentry, I just wanna say something that she told me earlier. Move it back, Patty. Everything was advertised, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Patty, would you please call a for a voice vote on this? I'm sorry, for a roll call vote on this.
Councilmember Netero?
Aye.
Councilmember Swol?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Maker?
Aye.
Councilmember Gunn?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Manta?
Aye, passes seven to zero. Thank you. Okay, we have consent agenda. Five items here, items eight, nine, ten, eleven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, I'm gonna read it. I'm gonna read this once, I don't think we need to read it a second time, so in the interest of time here, unless somebody wants me to read it a second time. So what we're looking to approve is approval of November 1st, 2021 City Council Meeting Minutes, approval of November 15th, 2021 City Council Work Session Minutes, approval of City Council Monthly Invoice for Legal Services, authorization for the city manager to advertise for seawalls and boat ramp improvements. The explanation of that is seawall renovations in 7th and 16th Street Parks, renovation of 7th Street Boat Ramp, new seawall in Community Center Eastside. And filing number 12, authorization for the city manager to advertise for the 12th and 13th Street Drainage Modification Project. Explanation is installation of new piping, stormwater inlets, paving and curb work as required. We're voting on eight, nine, ten, eleven and twelve, and yes vote passes all of them. I'm gonna do this by a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Seven to zero passes unanimously, eight, nine, ten, eleven and twelve are passed. We now move to... Yes?
I'm sorry, was there a motion? For pass or consent?
I said I was, I was just gonna read it once. Do you want me to read it a second time? I read it once, basically, as reading it and to pass it, so...
Yeah, just the motion?
Oh, the motion itself? I'm sorry, you're right.
I'm going to approve the consent.
Going to approve, second? Any, there's no discussion? Let's take a voice vote again, just to keep it official. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seven to zero, it still passes. Thank you, Patty, good catch. Patty, if you don't mind, I just wanna add a comment. We're done with this, and it's a very positive one. I read through the November 1st meetings, and you always do a very good job, I think, with the minutes, but those were exceptional. And I really think that if anyone looks at how minutes should be, they were perfect. I mean, they had the detail, but they didn't have too much. They were just perfect. So really, excellent job on that, thank you. And if anyone ever wants to see it, how it should be done, I think that's your example. To me, at least, that was, I read that and I was like, "Perfect", I mean, there wasn't a comma out of place, it was perfect. Great job. Regular agenda, 13th, authorization for the city manager to execute purchase order for the Alita Drive Drainage Project. The explanation is to execute purchase order to include Contracting Inc. for the Storm Drain Improvement Project. First motion?
To Luke.
Lesley Netero. Second, Dave Gaddis. Lesley? City manager? City manager?
Yes, Mayor, council, this is to correct an area on Alita Drive that we have some drainage issues where it's public after we did all the work. What we're gonna be doing, we spoke about this, I gave you a diagram in here. We're gonna be putting in new piping behind the curb at this one area on Alita to get the drainage to the drainage outfall box down the street. And this will eliminate the water that's been puddling there. We have funding in the 2021 Stormwater Fund to take care of this, and we've got three quotes. One for $24,843.65, one for $42,001.75, $75,461.18, and they're part of the package. If you have any other questions, I will be happy to answer them.
You're recommending with Contracting people?
Yes.
Have you worked with them before?
Yes, yeah, actually, he did, actually, he did the entrance signs for us. Started with Jago, and he's done other things. I've had, even when I was in military, he did projects for us. So he's been around to do it. He worked with us to try to keep the cost down, which is another benefit.
I'm gonna put a plug for my street, because they fixed the valley curbs in mine, and we have the same problem, okay? Maybe not to the extent that they have on Alita, but it puddles, it rots, it gets disgusting in the summertime. Right in front of my place, and I'm not sure if it's in other places, but I'm not sure this is happening in the city. But, I mean, it's so level, and it wasn't level before, but it is level now, and it's there, and it's just, you know, it's a mess. I mean, it's actually a mosquito trap, really, but, you know, you can't, it's a mess. And then stuff blows into it, and so, just letting you know, there may be other places in the city, but we're gonna get this one fixed right now.
Right.
Any council comments?
Yeah, I've seen it, it's late. Needs to go by Alita.
Yep.
I don't know if you'll be so large, because of where you're at. It's easy to get rid of it whenever it's a seawall.
I don't know, I don't know if they can do anything, maybe just re-pitch it, but I know, I think I've seen Alita, and it's...
It's bad.
Well, much, much worse, yeah. Any other council comments? Citizens, anyone commenting on this? Back to council, last word, Lesley Netero. I'm sorry? Gotta be fast there, Deborah! It's getting late, we're all getting tired. I see you now. Go ahead.
I don't have a dog in this fight, but I just want you guys to be aware of this. You may or may not be aware of it, but I'm just telling you because I hear it. There is a big feeling that, you know, all the people on Alita over there, they get preferential treatment when it comes to these things. And when this came up before, there were comments about, "Oh, their streets puddling, they get them fixed", mine's been flooding for 10 years, just like the young man who was here at the last meeting. So I think y'all need to be very aware of those issues. And if you're gonna put things ahead of, I know that we've got the street flooding scheduled, but I've been here for 20 years, and those streets have been flooding for 20 years. And so, you know, you have a PR problem, I guess I'll tell you.
Jim?
We spent, Juvian's Voice, 7th Street, Valerich. We spend a lot of money on different projects and so forth in this city. But, you know, you use 9th Street as an entrance to the park, which is one of our highlights of our city. I was never so ashamed in all my life going down 9th Street the other day and seeing the valley curbs. I am asking this council to take time, we don't live on 9th Street, and go down there and see those valley curbs. We're a pure city, not with valley curbs that come like that. They're pretty bad. I don't know that we've had any valley curbs look that bad in this city that I've seen. So please, take some time, go look at them, and then encourage or move them forward. I'm trying to do something about that, that is, that's not good. That's really bad, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens? Back to council?
I don't know why, I mean, I don't know if citizens are complaining that the curbs look bad or they're puddling. I live on 8th Street, we had ours redone, all right? And I think the baffle is too low, and I get ordered emptied in my driveway, okay? And I really believe, and the baffle closes at high tide. And if there was a catch basin, probably submerged 10 foot down, with 8-inch pumps pumping out, what's an 8-inch pump? I don't get all this stuff anymore, it's like 600, 64,000 gallons. You would never have any water on that street if you had a catch tube per. This is just typical rain, we get it. And if that citizens are complaining about that, ain't that... I mean, but I don't know why, why we designed all this stuff. I don't know who designed it, I don't know why they didn't put these catch basins. I don't know why they didn't raise the baffles up a little bit higher, but it's a mess. We put all that money in there, and I really don't see a difference.
Yeah, I mean, Frank, you know, I've built many a construction project, and I don't know why these people are getting paid before it rains, okay? You know, and mine's nothing in comparison, I've seen Alita, okay? Dave just said to me, "It's a puddle", and he's right, I've seen it, okay? But it doesn't have to be a puddle, okay? You know, we had somebody in our neighborhood a couple of years ago calling because there was too many mosquitoes. It turned out one of the neighbors or something had like a bucket upside down, and it was, "Well, we've got that in the driveway", you know, and I mean, it's standing water, and then we're hearing, you know, "The valley curbs are a mess on 9th Street", I think I have seen worse, I seem to remember going around last time and seeing some that were pretty worse. But I know we're trying to fix all this stuff, but Lynn, to me, when I had a project, you didn't get paid until the final inspection and everything passed out, and sometimes there was even a retainage. I don't know that maybe it's not a good idea on valley curbing and stuff like this to say, "You know, we're gonna hold 10% back until we get a little bit of rain", in the summer, that would be all, you know, three days. Winter, it might take a little bit longer, but, you know, we need to know if this stuff is level, because if we're making things that are as level as a billiard's table, the water's not gonna flow. And Frank's talking some technical stuff here, but I'm not familiar with some of it, but, I mean, I'm just, I think we're a great city in terms of paying people, but maybe we wanna think about holding some retainage back and making sure this stuff works, because I agree, we are going back and doing stuff again, and we put a stormwater fee on everybody, and I don't wanna see the money wasted.
I don't think, in the Alita situation, I don't... It's just one little tiny spot in the whole street.
Once that area, then that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna re-pipe it. Part of the problem is not just rain, it's people running their sprinklers six and seven days a week. And that's, that's a problem, uh, that we, we even found on Alita. Having lived on 8th Street for many years, the water level is not anywhere near what it used to be. I mean, with the baffles put in, you know? And the, the plan, excuse me, for curbs was not to go in and tear up curbs if there's a stormwater project on it until we get to it. Because all you're doing at that point in time is you're gonna end up tearing the street up again, and you're gonna replace the curbing again. So, that, that was, that's kind of what we've been doing, is if there's a street, and 9th Street is probably, I'm gonna say, a year or two away from its cycle, then, you know, there's been money set up for paving and curbs and re-piping and putting new, new, uh, catch basins in. So, the things we've done to try to stop some of this, uh, 9th Street, we did put a, a baffle valve to stop it. And people were telling me, "Oh, no, it's the tide coming out there." So, I went over and did a unscientific, uh, test. I went and got a water testing kit. Turns out, it was rainwater or sprinkler water, it wasn't saltwater, and, you know, I, I kinda explained that to everyone. Took a couple of little bottles, went out in the street, picked it up out of the curb, and then I went down here and picked a sample of saltwater up, and threw, you know, actually, some of the stuff in the curb, unfortunately, was...
I remember this.
Almost drinking water, 'cause I wanted to see what the difference was with the drinking water out of the tap, and it was pretty scary, if you think about it.
I think the tap stuff came in worse in some cases.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember when you told me that.
But, but that's my point, I mean, uh, there was a, there was a storm right after Easter this year, and it was at high tide, we had about three inches in an hour, and that water went all the way down, almost to Gotthard. And, um, the one neighbor came out, and he says, "I haven't had water come down this far since the 93 winter storm, unnamed storm." And it was all rainwater. And it was a catch basin, and that water could've gone in and then pumped out, it would've mediated all that. But if you're, if you're, and people say that to us too, if you're, if the water's at the top of the seawall, you're not pumping out anything.
Absolutely, but it wasn't at the top of the seawall, is what I'm saying. Glenn Duggan?
Yeah, Debbie, Debbie says we have a PR problem. The way I characterize it, I did it in the past, is we don't do well managing expectations. We start a project, we go into the neighborhood, heavy equipment rolls in, we put down some conduit, people says, "Oh, the city's here to solve this flooding problem after 20, 40 years." Well, we've been trying to say that you live on Barrier Island, there are gonna be a confluence of conditions that are gonna cause flooding. And they've been trying, we've tried to characterize them all, how, how long does it last, are cars impassable, is the street completely impassable? How long does it take for the flooding to clear, to try to prioritize some of that stuff. But the, the bottom line is, we don't do well as a city saying, "Hey, this is not the stop-all, this is not gonna solve your problem." It's still gonna be flooding when the moon's in a certain condition, the winds are blowing from a certain direction, the tide's a certain way, or we've had rain for the last 39 days or something like that. We don't do well in that, and we need to do better on that. There's also never any admission of whether or not the people who own those houses, did they do diligence when they bought them things, those houses, or that there was full disclosure in the real estate deal. So, I mean, whereas, there's, there's more arguments to this, solving this equation than just, "Hey, we need to do better than this." The engineers do a good job, the people go in and they do the repairs according to the specs they're given, and I'm not quite sure how you resolve issues well, it didn't meet expectations or something along those dimensions.
Well, there, there are all new curbs here. Frank, could you put that mic closer?
There are all new curbs by Alita Drive, right? And that were running, and I was out there, and they were all box-cut formed curbs, okay, where that's, that's great, but there's curb machines today that would've done the grading. Maybe we should look at better contractors, okay, and you wouldn't have this problem. And, and I don't know how you people put up with some of that, your road was torn up for months, okay? And alive it was, you know, two-by-four box, then they, uh, half-inch plywood and box it, pour it. They pour so many feet a day, you could pour a thousand feet a day in a curb machine. And you would get a nice, yeah, yeah.
Glenn, again, I, I remember this issue well, with these check valves, and it, part of it was the city's fault, okay? It was sold in the City News that this was the panacea, this was gonna cure your flooding woes, and I actually wrote about this, 'cause it, the only thing I'm saying is that I remember, it happened during the last campaign, and I was the one, I researched the valves, and I said, "These are sunny day check valves, these are not rainy day check valves," and I explained that. It wasn't initially explained that way. And I think, you know, people hear, "Hey, we got check valves, it's gonna stop the onslaught of hurricane Irma." Well, no, it's not. Ache is going to block it off, and it's not gonna drain. You're right, we live on Barrier Island, and I think, well, you know, I think we did get the message out ultimately that these are sunny day check valves, this is only gonna help you lunar situations, high tide, you know, that confluence that sometimes just causes our, you know, streets to flood in the middle of August for no good reason. Um, so, yeah, I, I agree with you, I think, you know, we need to just be very, very clear, because people, if they read it, they say, "Oh, check valve's gonna stop the flooding, I can stay here, you know, during the hurricane." No, you can't do that, you know?
Well, in the, at a future time, I think it's incumbent upon us to start in more town hall meetings, Bellard Beach, City 101. These are the projects, this is the timeline, this is what our expectations are for what we're gonna solve. Does that meet your expectations or not? You know, we don't want that dismissive expectation, so... At a future time, I think we need to start talking about this stuff.
Excellent idea.
Beyond.
Any other council comments before we call the vote? Um, Leslie, you do have the last word. The last words. Okay. Item 13, Authorization of the City Manager to Execute Purchase Order for the Alita Drive Drainage Project. A yes vote will pass this. I'm gonna do this with a voice vote, if it's okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes seven to zero. City Manager, you'll go forward then with that project. Thank you. Any unfinished business?
I, I just have something we, we discussed about the buoys.
Yes.
Uh, I put something at your place tonight with what I sent, just some concepts. What I would suggest we do is maybe use the walking easements as possibly the boat access areas, and expand these, but I just sent this to Florida Wildlife Commission, just to see what they'd say about swim areas. So, what they told me is, uh, if we put a buoy every 150 feet, and we put one, I, I'm showing three swim areas, but...
Swears are the three swim areas, right?
Right. This is just proposed, 'cause it's kind of a, let's see what Florida Wildlife says. Okay, so, they looked at it and said, "Yes, you can make them as big as you want." When you talk about the sides, he, he did say that I recommend you put a buoy on the sides that are going back towards the shore. So, what I'm probably gonna bring you, uh, if, if there's some consensus with this, is something where I take the four beach accesses and delineate those on the map, and then say, uh, maybe we'll make it 300-foot wide at those, and then everything else will be a swim area, but those areas will be the access without any buoys, that, if, if the council's amenable to that. So, what you would have is an access of each one of the walking easements for someone to come up.
Shouldn't it be the other way around? If I'm gonna walk, if I'm gonna use the walking easements, and I'm carrying my cooler and my umbrella, which we could use in our city, and all my other gear, I'm gonna stay pretty close to the walking easement where I walk over and not go down. So, shouldn't that be the swim area, and the other stuff be the boat area?
Well, what I'm trying to alleviate is, and, and I'm just gonna give you an example. Let's say, uh, Alumet, if you look at this map, let's say Alumenera condo, there's no swim area in front. They might get themselves concerned that there's no swim area. And I would also suggest that we have a discussion with the condos, 'cause this is really who it's gonna affect. And, you know, if you went down to like, uh, the Bellard Beach Club, as an example, if, if you just took the three swim areas that I threw out there, uh, to the FWC, well, you'd have to walk quite a ways to go swimming. And I think the intent of the, uh, whole situation was at least give the opportunity to, for a boat to come into shore periodically. So, that's why I was using the, the, uh, accesses. And when I talked to FWC, we don't have to go out and do any surveying. We use as an example, uh, from 20th Street to 21st Street is the first swim area. That's how we'll describe them, in 300-foot outline. So, uh, you know, if you want me to stay away from the walking easements, that's fine.
We could have you out at a work session, but I can type.
So, what I'm, what I'm asking is, is this kind of what you were looking for with the swim areas, so the boats could get in?
I think it's a, it's a consensus, or not a consensus, but a, a good compromise.
So, so what we'll do, we'll get a little more creative and bring something to the work session in January.
And you can go a little wider on the swim areas, 'cause it's something like a block, which is a block.
Well, I just put 300-foot by 300-foot boxes on the map, I sent it to the FWC, and said, "This is what we're thinking about doing, we may do more, we may do less, do you have any problem with this? And what would we have to do to make it work?" And he basically told me, "You put the buoys out on the end, but in the 300-foot coming in, halfway in, 150-foot from the shore, put a buoy on the sides." So, you can delineate that, "Hey, just 'cause you see this, three buoys out here, that doesn't mean you can come in behind it and drive through it." So, we delineate those as swim areas.
Glenn Duggan?
It seems like we're, we're, we're necking down on what, what we like. But I have a concern that we don't have any feedback from the people in the condos, just like you guys said. That, and, and I think they're big stakeholders in this, because it, primarily they're really at the beach, and, you know, as much as we talk about beach rights and all that, well, here's a group of people who bought property because they wanted to look at a certain thing there, and, uh, I would also, not only their commentary, but, you know, some people are more beachgoers than I am, certainly. And I think once we kind of have an idea of what we want, we may want to have a public polling on this thing and run it for 60, 90 days, and make sure we understand what we don't know.
And, and my thought with the walking accesses, those are public walking accesses. And if the, if those are the areas, yes, I understand that, but if you could go to the right or left 50 feet, to a swim area, it wouldn't have as big an impact on the condos if, because that is already a public access.
And, and what I see is the exact opposite of what we would actually have. The swim areas would be the majority, and you would have small air access.
Yeah, you'd have four, four access points, the rest of them would be swim area, but, you know, to be reasonable, I think they'd have to be probably somewhere around 300-foot wide.
So, if I, I'm not sure I'm understanding, I'm thought, I'm thinking you're telling me the square areas are the swim areas, which are very small, okay?
That, that was what I, I just wanted to run it by.
If we had three or four boat areas that were 300 by 300, I think we've solved the problem.
That's what I was trying to do.
I think we're good. But I think we're good, and Glenn Duggan's point is absolutely important. If we, we like it, I don't swim here. The condo people do swim here, and I wanna hear what they have to say, because they may have a whole different take that we just aren't even thinking about right now.
Right. Well, our condo is me.
Okay.
And I would prefer to have very extended swim area in front of that to keep the boats out, and I would, I would hope that the, we could switch it, the squares would be the boat accesses, and the...
Well, that's, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm suggesting. I just gave you this map, 'cause this is the map that I gave to the FWC, 'cause I wanted to get some kind of preliminary feedback from them. "Are you gonna allow us to do this?" And they said, "You can make them as big as you want, just make sure you do this and this." And I said, 'cause they'll probably get expanded when I talk to them. So, my suggestion with the walking easements is, those are not as impactful to the condos as putting the swim areas bigger and making the, the walking accesses the boat port, I guess I'll call it.
I, I see your logic now, and I like it better, yes, that's, yes. Because we're not, I mean, with Morgan Street we own, that's not a problem.
No.
The walking easements, because this way, Leslie just said it, and every condo is gonna say the same thing, "We don't want to have the boat access here, give it a more swim access." That's what I think they'll say, unless there are a lot of boaters in there, um, so I...
Well, I was gonna make a boat access in, in front of Leslie.
I'd have to her doorstep, absolutely.
Getting me to boat, too?
No, but I just wanted to get the council's feedback and, and make sure that we were going the right direction, so, so...
Okay, I think you have consensus, right?
Okay.
We're, you're, you're on the right track. Very right track. City, any other unfinished? City Attorney?
I submitted an attorney report, which is in the form of a memo that I think Patty included within the packet. The, the highlights of the memo, or the, the qualifying as a candidate for, uh, several city council positions is December 14th through December 21st. The, uh, pursuant to the charter, the city clerk is the supervisor of elections for the city. I've included section 97.023 Florida statutes, which sets forth the procedures for citizens or candidate to address complaints of, of Florida election code violations, given the full text of the statute. And the purpose in providing that to you is, is to make it, uh, clear that the, the, um, commission has, uh, primary jurisdiction over the election code violations, and the circuit court has, uh, jurisdiction as well. The city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney do not have jurisdiction to address complaints of the Florida election code. So, I want to make that clear. Prior to the election season starting, certainly, um, with several positions, will be a spirited, uh, debate and spirited, uh, competition. So, this was the right time to, uh, present this to the council. I don't stand for any questions.
I only have a comment. Patty, I'd like to, this is a very good memo, and, um, I know packets have been picked up by many people already, but you know who those people are. If we, some of them are on council, but others are not, we can make sure they get a copy of this memo also. This is very helpful, because you're involved as director of elections here, but they are not. In fact, the city attorney is actually specifically supposed to stay out of it for his contract, and Lynn Reeves is supposed to stay out of it for his, um, ICMA agreement, so, I mean, we're not, this is not the venue if people have any problems with what they think is an election problem. That's Florida Tallahassee. So, this, this says it all, and, you know, I'd like to see if they can get that, but it was a good memo, Fred, and I appreciate it for everybody. Anybody else have comments? Fred, do you have any other comments, the city attorney?
No, so...
Okay, thank you.
I have a com, I have a comment. I think that this, uh, I know it's, it's in the agenda, it is in the agenda packet, but maybe it's not a, not a bad idea to post it somewhere else. I have a feeling that Patty is already receiving numerous phone calls, and, uh, this is a good, a good... and this is a good, a good lighter or a reference point where you could direct them to.
Well, I'll make one more comment. I work for another city and the other city has issues every single year. So the purpose in presenting it to you this year is that it's better for everybody, including primarily the citizens, to be aware of what the law is so that the city clerk is not inundated with calls and demands that she do something about it. So that's really what I was trying to achieve.
And, you know, in saying it, there is a recourse to the Florida Election Commission. There's also issues if you go there with garbage, okay? So, but people know that. This is not to try and gum up the works. The candidates are all working hard enough to try and get elected. If you file frivolous stuff, there's penalties for that. So people should know that, okay? I mean, if they're tempted to go file garbage, they're going to have a problem with that from, you know, from the people they filed the garbage against. There's legal fees and things like that. It's not just say anything you want to do, you know, now try and nail people with false stuff. That won't work. So I'm not their attorney. They need to get an attorney and they need to consult with the ethics people if they have any issues because frivolous complaints are not going to be flying with them, I can tell you that. City manager?
Just a reminder, Patty and I are going to be on vacation at, starting Christmas, what? The 23rd through the end of the year. So if you want anything, put on the agenda for the January meeting. If you could get it to us by December 20th at noon. And Patty's going to be pretty busy because starting the 14th at 8 o'clock, election qualifying begins and it ends on December 21st at noon. And she'll, she's going to be very busy during that time. So we want to try to help her out with any agenda items. Citizens Advisory Committee met and we'll bring something to the work session about what their thoughts are with the American Rescue money. And we've got another meeting on Wednesday to discuss the digital sign amendment to the ordinance. So they've got some information prepared, so we've got a couple of our cities' digital ordinances for them to look at. And they're going to do that on Wednesday. And Thursday, we, her and I, have a training session through the Board of Adjustment Group, just to kind of go over the sunshine and how the rules work with the, you know, variance and this stuff. And I've got seven more pages, but I'll pass tonight. And I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Glenn. Thank you to you and your family. Okay, to... Nothing? City council comments. Start with Robinaki this month.
No problem. Everybody have a happy holiday.
Thank you, Robin, too. Frank Banker?
Yeah, the citizen that brought these pictures in?
Yes.
I actually feel chief now, which is why I bring that to the council. I guess there's a, there's a motora light here. I mean, you of the city or the debate. I remember when the ordinance got changed, I wasn't on council, our city manager was getting beaten up really bad by one of the people that lived on 8th Street over that. They wanted, I think he wanted him to cut all your palm trees down in front of your artillery. But it got changed. I wouldn't mind seeing it changed back. But this is, this is really a block of view. I mean, we got a neighbor in town saying that you can't have a beach umbrella because it blocks their view. And that's only up for an hour or two. And then you can't even see out here. So I would believe the council should look into this. I also believe on that sign out function, you turned off at 8 o'clock at night. I don't know why we need to until 10.
Thank you, Frank.
And Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you and your family. Glenn Doug.
I'll address Damian Rogers' concerns about the sign. Also, but something I think the city manager, he just, it's on one of his other seven pages or something. But as late as this morning, he was making adjustments to that sign because he's more aware there are hotspots. I mean, literally, you could come down to the Clausway and from those condos on the other side, you had hotspot across, you could see it. And so he's well aware of the issues. Kyle's already made some adjustments to the brightness. And on the evening tonight, we need to kind of make a mental note of what it looks like. There were also some concerns about the scrolling times and the transition and that sort of thing. He had some very plausible explanations or recommendations how you have to go through a procedure to burn in the LEDs and stuff. But they're already making corrections to this stuff. Let's tend to look at it tonight while we go out there and let's provide some more feedback to the city manager, the neighborhood process. Hey, we want to take the high road and make everybody happy with this thing. I'll talk to you all later. Thanks.
Thank you, Glenn. Leslie Nettaro?
Merry Christmas. Happy holidays to you all. Thank you.
Thank you and your family also. Deb Gaddis? Oh, I'm sorry. We just woke us. We just woke...
Yes, well, I would like to make, actually, more of a comment to the city manager, asking for clarification really. There's been some information put out in the community regarding the sign. It's like 60,000 and I've been getting some inquiries from several people to clarify that. To my understanding, the sign cost about $35,329, got some change. Matt, who did all the installation, you got about $4,040 back from the insurance and possibly still will get more. So right now we're probably sitting at around 31,289, excuse me, versus 60. Is that correct? That's my first comment.
Yeah, that's correct.
I'd like to make another one before we answer city manager Lynn Reeves.
Yeah, that is correct.
There's inquiries as well regarding this $2.5 million project on 7th. People are asking me for more clarification on that. To my understanding, the cost of that was around 1.2 and it was none at Ballard Beach's expense. It was all Indian Rocks Beach. And also that it was decided by Adam's boat and by the county. So do you have any information on that? Can you clarify that as well so I can make sure the proper information is getting out there?
Well, you're talking about the capital project that was done a couple of years ago?
Correct.
Yeah, it was a capital project from Pinellas County for the sewer system. And it was, your number's wrong, it's 1,780,000. And it was for the pump station in Indian Rocks Beach. And they advertised it in early March and then they awarded it in June on their consent agenda. That was a question. And the consent agenda was a seven to zero vote. It did help pump station 95, but it was Pinellas County funds. You know, the city did not get any funding from it, but we got some benefit from it. So, because there's more pumping capability in station 190, which is in somewhere in Indian Rocks Beach. I don't know exactly where it's at. So that's all I know about it at this point.
Okay. Was my information correct on the sign cost as well? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you answer that.
Yeah, the sign cost was, the sign cost total, after we paid for the sign, some engineering, permit to the county, and another electrical circuit, it was $35,329.30. The insurance has already paid us $4,040. And I will be getting, once the cleared checks are back from the sign company, which they should be here hopefully this week. I've asked the finance people to give me photocopies so I can send that along with the invoice to the insurance because at the time when we started, we were going to get somewhere around $10,000. But because it took so long to resolve the sign, but we are able to reason that hopefully this one on the back.
Okay, thank you. And to all the citizens in our community, have an awesome holiday. And to our city staff as well as our city manager, your city attorney, have a Merry Christmas as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb Gaddis?
All right. Going back to the sign, we're going to touch on that a little bit. I agree, it's too bright right now. But we knew this was going to have some problems and it takes a little time to figure out how to work a new tool. One of my recommendations might be, and I don't know if it's possible or not because I've never seen the schedule or program, but maybe we shift from a white to a darker color whenever you get to those, that time period. Again, I don't know what the capabilities are, but I think it's something that we can work out. I come home sometimes 9:00, 10:00. In fact, 9 o'clock now, I'll be passing that sign shortly. And there may be something that I'd like to see. But I think beyond 10 o'clock, I think that that's sufficient. So I'm against changing the schedule, but certainly resolving the issue with blinding bright light. And while we're discussing lights, there is a street light across the street from that sign. I believe it's held up by a concrete post. That puts out way more light than the sign does from the pictures that I've seen on the internet. So we may want to look into that. I believe it's the one that's purple right now, that bright purple.
Yeah, it's a different...
Yeah, that one. I don't know why we have purple lights, but the county was testing some... I guess they are testing. They had some even on the bridge, the area that we would be responsible for. And I said, no, I want to move back to whatever it was supposed to be. So that's what the purple light. And I'll talk to Jeff about that and see from the county. But just to clarify, what we're doing with the sign, we're going to look at, okay, maybe the lettering's red or green as opposed to white or a different color. And we're going to look at adjusting the intensity because we can do that. But as far as the sign without the digital, that's a pretty much on and off thing unless we do something else that we can find that ends that portion. But we can work with the digital sign. The company told us initially, we needed to burn all the, what I call all the little light bulbs in there. I maybe called them the wrong thing. They told me to make sure you burn them in throughout the sign. Don't put stuff stationary, make sure it moves rather quickly. Right now, we're scrolling in about six seconds. We're going to do away with scrolling, maybe run it up to 10 or 11 seconds. And I think some of the standards are like 15 seconds, but we're going to play with that. And we'll do some adjustments. I think that'll help the situation. So what's it been here? A month maybe? Is that not right? Yeah, so, yeah, we're cognizant of the neighbors. We don't, we're not trying to impact them at all.
But the timing of it too?
Well, hang on. I don't want to have the conversation back. It hasn't come out of the tape, so... So the question was on the floor was the timing. Okay, Lynn?
Yeah, we turn it on at 6:00 in the morning, the digital portion turn it off at 10:00. And the reason we thought that is kind of what Patty just said. You know, there's people that come home, work different hours. People that probably Robin goes to work at 5:00 in the morning, she's going to miss it. But if she waits until 6:00, we'll see what's going on. So I think after, as we adjust the intensity, then maybe we can work with those other things. And it may not, may be a moot point, whether it's on 6:00 in the morning until 10:00. So I think we just have to spend some time with that.
All right. Other than that, everyone have a happy holidays. And I hope that you take time to spend some quality time with people that you care about and also remember your neighbors.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Glenn. Okay, so I have a few items, just some random things. Just comments I heard from citizens. Lynn, I don't know if there's anything well founded about this at all, but I'm just going to give it to you for taking a look into. The boards on the walking easements get slippery. Don't know if they do or don't know if they don't. Never been there when they were wet. Please take a look if you would. Somebody was complaining about a submerged piling on 7th Street. I don't know if that was cleared out when we did the, when we did the removal or not, but if you could just double check, there shouldn't be anything submerged out there right now. So I don't need an answer tonight. I just, these are just for you to, you know, stick on the list maybe and see where we're at. Regarding the two citizen issues that we have...
Here, just, let me add to that piling issue. There's one, there's two that Tony Gatliff went out with friends over the weekend and they were just leaving and barely moved out of where the buoy used to be. There's no buoy there right now. Ripped the whole rear, the lower unit off of this boat. And they went back and they looked and there are two concrete piers that someone has deposited there. I made the call to you about it today, but thank you for it. There is a reminder, at the very end of, as you're leaving our inlet, you're kind of going around, you're passing Howard.
Right.
All right. And, you know, there's that, the very end of Howard where it's got the big dock that's on an empty lot. It's directly in front of that beyond where the buoy was. And I think he marked it with a green crab trap. But whenever I came...
Talk to it.
Yeah, whenever I came out looking for it, I couldn't find it.
I'll talk to it.
Yeah. Low tide, it killed the boat.
So, yeah, I mean, there may be one by the 7th Street area too. So, you know, maybe they hit the oyster beds. I don't know. But just have a look if you would.
7th Street, it was like way into 50.
Yeah. Just, yeah. Okay, the citizens' issues. Start with the sign. I have no problem with us getting the hang of this, okay? And I know we're working on it and everything. But I also want, you know, part of the deal with this was to be acceptable to the neighbors and everything's going to be working out right. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to put this on for the January 15th work session for us to discuss a resolution, to get start times, end times, and actually kind of say, okay, here's the way it's going to be done. So this way, everybody has an input into it and we get something codified. And hopefully by then, we'll get a report as to if it's not bright enough, too bright, just bright, you know? And we'll kind of know. That gives us another month and a half. Okay, I know some of that's holiday, you're going to be away. So play with it, do what you got to do with it, burn it in, you know? And then let's see where we're at, revisit it. Let's put it on, Patty, if we would, for the work session in mid-January. This way, we can bring it to a resolution in February and at least start getting this thing done. Because, you know, I think we should have, at least the citizens should know, here's what the rule is going to be, we're going to keep it on X amount of hours a day. And let this council pass what that should be. So I'm going to propose that and I'm going to ask that it be added on to the work session.
And that's the 18th of January?
18th of January, okay. I knew it would be around the 15th. January 18th is our work session. Okay. These pictures, thank you for staying around. Sorry we couldn't do this earlier. I've tried.
Oh, no, it hasn't changed much. I know that's not a good news, but...
No, so, you know, there's two things here, okay? We have a code that we've revised and revised and revised. Look, I like picture number one where you've got this beautiful view. It's absolutely gorgeous. And then you look at this last thing and you look at an overgrown palm trees. It's terrible. But unfortunately, you're not entitled to a view. That's one of the, that's a legal concept, basically. You're not. So we as a city though can say, you know, this isn't like a building that was legally built. These are trees and maybe there's something we could do with this. So my suggestion is, this seems to be, this is a slower process. It's not like something we can just do up here on the council. But there's legal concerns because you may not be able to legislate this. I mean, we're fighting the folks across the street because they wanted a view because they said an umbrella block blocks their view. We're fighting them, right? I don't know if we, can we say cut down these trees or trim these trees to the wall height or something like that? So there's legal concerns as to what we can do as a city. So there's legal concerns as to what we can do as a city. Can, you know, where do we overstep or where do we not overstep? But this is something I think that, you know, we set quick hitters for the Citizen Advisory Committee. This is something the Citizens Advisory Committee can work on with the city attorney, come back with a recommendation. I would be, if it's legal, I would be in favor on these type of lots to say that, you know, maybe the wall is as high as you can go. There, you know, there's just no reason to go up this high because you're just destroying, you know, a beautiful view. The other school of thought is, I'm the neighbor and I want my privacy, you know? So I don't know where we're going with this one. But we have a Citizen Advisory Committee that basically will research this, meet on it, kind of get their opinions. A lot of them, the good thing is our boat have waterfront properties. So I think they'll be sympathetic towards what's going on. And we'll see what they come back with. And then the next step would be for us either to amend the existing ordinance, which you kind of saw in process tonight. It's a two process, reading, we have to pass it once and then pass it a second time. And that's how it would change if we're able to change it at all. So that's the best I can offer you because we're not in power to just change it on the fly. And I wouldn't because there's definitely legal concerns on this, you know? So I bet some time on this one.
I'm just trying to help you out and give you the.
You know what? I, I bet, I'm going to give you, I'm going to bet.
No, I was just going to say, the other form of that is a code review. I mean, if we do those on a frequent basis, we're trying to get into that habit and, you know, we change something and unexpected consequences.
And we've had a couple of those. So I guess I'm going to say move this one forward because I would be able to review planned in the near future. I did think about that. It actually says code review. Permission to take a citizen question? Anybody have a problem? Deborah, please come up here so it gets on the record.
I don't know if this is still the case, but we were a tree city, Bella Beach. I think we still are. Do you know, Lynn?
I think we are.
And so the only thing, the only reason I'm saying this is because when Frontier Order was, collapsed our driveway and we had to take out a tree and stuff, you have to get a permit to take out a tree if you are designated to.
I don't believe we're a tree city, correct, Mr. Reeves?
No.
We're not a tree city.
We were then.
We're not now. We haven't been since I lived here.
There's nothing in the code about trees or permits, so I don't know.
It's actually been that way for a long time. It goes back to when I bought my property in two thousand and five.
It was back farther than that.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not sure that there, that the city of Bella Beach was ever a tree city.
No, we weren't. I, I know I checked because I was removing a tree that was going to block my view and they said, don't, you don't have to do it. I did plant another, I actually planted two trees to replace it, so. Let's talk about that Seventh Street pier, Seventh Street Pumping Station. I have real good recollection of how that happened. And I've said this story several times. June Van Scollet, I was shopping in Sam's Club and she introduced me to county commissioner Long. And I met with her and I knew that was a problem. And Lynn Reeves will attest to this. One of the things he told me when I was running as mayor, don't waste your, well, I was a mayor. He goes, don't waste your time. We've been trying for twenty years to get that fixed and it can't be fixed. And I'm like, well, let's give it a shot. I met her in a Sam's Club. She was trying to buy her steaks, I think. And I was like, you're not going to buy them yet. I need to talk to you about Seventh Street. Turns out that it was coming up and she agreed to shepherd this thing through. And if you remember, Lynn, you and I went right afterwards to the, to meet with the people in the county. And we were able to bring this project home. It was one point seven million, one point eight million, all rounded to two million. They originally thought it would stop all the flooding. If you lived in that area, every time we got heavy rains, we had these big sewer trucks that just went twenty-four, seven, jet pumps. No one could sleep. It was horrible. People were just going crazy. And it's really reduced that almost to the point that I don't think we've seen one in quite some time. So it still may happen if they get an exceptional one. They thought it might undo it, but that was two million dollars. And that was because of a meeting in Sam's Club with myself and the county commissioner and June Van Scollet and a trip to the county with Lynn Reeves. So that's how we got that. I remember it well. And it didn't cost us a nickel. With that said, I don't think I have any other comments other than Merry Christmas. If you've celebrated Hanukkah, I hope you had a wonderful Hanukkah, a wonderful New Year and any other holidays that you might be celebrating. I hope I answered your questions for you. If not, I'll be here afterwards and you can talk with me. See everybody in the New Year and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Everyone, happy holidays.